Okay, okay. Thank you, everyone. This is the Planning Board meeting, March 30th, at 7:00. And we're in the Carver Middle High School cafeteria tonight. And we're having a joint meeting with the RDA. So with that, that'll open up the Planning Board end of it. And I'll hand this over to Chairman Sharon Clark from the IDA.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And with that, I will call to order the Carver Redevelopment Authority. Our member, Pat Maher, is not well, so he will not be appearing, as I told him, keeping his job. This is to be the public hearing for zoning amendments that the RDA is proposing through the Planning Board. And we should just go 30.
Yep.
With each... This is our consultant who's been working with us, Mr. Stephen Cole from the Plymouth Regional Economic Development Foundation. And they did that without looking this time. And he was also formerly a town planner here. And he is going to expound on each of the amendments. I'm going to read them as they will appear in the warrant, or our latest version of it. And the first one is concerning...
We should go with Stephen. Your presentation first.
Oh, why don't you go first? Yeah, that might be because I have some supplemental...
You want to see?
Nope. Not at all. Nope, sitting all day.
Okay, we're gonna do a little visual stuff first.
I prepared an interpretive dance for tonight's presentation. As Sharon said, my name is Stephen Cole. But don't let that fool you. I'm just some guy. I have a really cool job. And the only thing better than being the Carver Town Planner is being the former Carver Town Planner. I'm very glad that Tom Bott is on our team as our intern. He's a brilliant mind. We know him from a couple of other communities around the area. And I'm glad to say that he is someone I respect immensely. And he's a real planner, unlike me. I was just pretending most of the time. Why I'm here, though, is because of economic development and particularly the urban renewal plan. I want to address that real quick. Although Carver is very not rural... Or, excuse me, urban. The legislation that creates the remediation project is called urban renewal. So just as a mindset, we're not urban, of course. Why are we here? Well, there's eight asterisk zoning changes that we're asking the town meeting to approve. And I want to be clear. Something can already happen at that site. These zoning amendments are intended to polish, clean up, enhance what's already allowed there. We're gonna get back into these in just a second. But before we do, I want to go through some supplemental information just to kind of frame everyone's mindset for how we got here and what we're actually asking these folks to do. First and foremost, the purpose and the goals of this project cannot be understated. To remediate light and contamination. For anybody who visited this site prior to its current condition, it was a stump dump, septic dump. Anything you can imagine happening there, it happened there. It's now cleaned up. Increase the property value. This has been off the tax rules and hasn't had any real yield or value to it for the last 30-plus years. Now it has value to it. We restore property to the tax rules. We'll talk about that a little bit more, not tonight. But as the applicant goes through the special permit process, we'll know more about the end user. We'll have a better understanding of what the economic growth trajectory could be, types of jobs, salaries, et cetera. But nonetheless, we know that jobs are being created at this site and it's being added to the tax rules. We know that. A state-of-the-art facility. If you approve these amendments that are being proposed to you tonight, we could have a state-of-the-art facility. We're going to have a facility, be clear. But we could have a state-of-the-art facility. And then lastly, a dedicated customer and revenue stream for Kevin's North Carver Water District. Right, Kevin? We're gonna have an excellent partner, an excellent corporate residence, someone who's gonna help balance the accounts, not just in residential real estate taxes, but some of the ancillary services that the town provides. Namely, water and sewer. I have been talking about this as though this has been going on for 30 years. Kevin reminds me that he's a little bit older than me. And it's been going on a little bit longer than even that. But the fact of the matter is, this site has been talked about for 50 years. That's two generations. So two generations of Carver residents have lived and grown up and had participation in town meetings for the last 50 years to talk about this site. So nothing here really should be new. Really, where we are is at the five-yard line. Whether you want to run the ball or you want to kick the ball, it's kind of what we're asking you to decide. And then lastly, with great deference and respect to Hillwood, I've come to know these folks. I've come to research the company. I respect them immensely. One of the things I'd like to know when we're dealing with developers is, do they have the capacity to deliver on what they're saying? And I believe that after scrutinizing these folks, they do. They really do. They have a couple of other projects, well over 208 million square feet of industrial space worldwide, 90 clients and customers who are Fortune 500, Global 500 Forbes. So no small thing.
Thanks.
The merits of this project are independent of Hillwood, though, because the fact of the matter is, the region is going this way. Other town halls, other town meetings are discussing increasing height allowances, including even incentivizing them. So where Carver is, frankly, is ahead of the game for the region. What makes Carver particularly special also is you have an investor already at the table. So with that said, I want to shock you with this. There's 27 towns in Plymouth County. And the methodology here on this rate here is the commercial and industrial tax rates. Some towns have a uniform rate like Plymouth. Some towns have a split rate like Carver. I identified these 18 communities out of the 27 because they're the most fun. But also, they're the ones that touch Carver or touch the towns that touch Carver. So some of the unfun ones like Marion are included. But frankly, they're nowhere near where I wanted to show you, anyway. The Carver tax rate is the third highest in the county. These folks know this. And the sticker shock didn't drive them away. So there's nothing really to say about this, except if you want to see how economic development in Carver has gone in the past, just look at an aerial of the airport. You can tell exactly where that town line is without even having the border up because that's where development stops. Plymouth offers a much lower tax rate with all the services and amenities that come to it. And Carver does not. So I'm not gonna dwell on this. I just want you to know that they are gonna pay. Here is a slide that shows you where this project is. A lot of folks don't necessarily know where it is. Way up in the northwest corner. And on the right picture there, you can see that it's right on the middle borough and Plington lines. There are no residents in the vicinity in Carver near this project. And here, I know you're thinking, why is this guy showing me a video of war-torn Europe? It's not war-torn Europe. It's actually the site, the location. So you're seeing a drawn footage of about 250, 300 feet up, starting initially looking toward middle borough and then scanning towards Plington. This is what it looks like as of December. The road you see there at the bottom of the screen is Park Ave. So I'm just gonna play that one more time so folks can get a sense of what that site looks like. All right. In terms of what's gonna look, what's gonna happen on that site, we're looking at two buildings as it's being proposed now. We don't have an awful lot of information, but this is what we've been sharing. You have two buildings, one 1.2 million square feet, one about 500, 600,000 square feet. And then you have here a picture of the cross-section of the building that shows a 40-foot clearance. And then the apartment structure's on top. You see in the far right, in the red line, that's Montello Street. You see the new Montello Street. And then you see the line, the Park Ave, that brings you into the site, all the way to the back of the building to Propose Building B. In addition to the improvements on-site, this is also being discussed, traffic improvements. You'll see that they're talking about two lanes in each direction, bike lanes and sidewalks on both sides of Main Street. You have the part of Montello Street that's being decommissioned with the new Montello Street showing there also with signalization. These are purveyed by VHB. VHB is an engineering consulting company. They've been working on this project for as long as I can remember. And you see there, there's some estimates for the cost of construction for those improvements. 3.2 million has already been awarded to the town for the Montello Street improvements.
So the question, has anything been put forward towards this particular aspect of the project? Any money? Who's paying for the designs? Where's this coming from? It's the first I've heard of it, so I'm...
This was part of the MEPA process, Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act.
Which I read. So is this a recommendation by them? Or is there any funding for this? Or is this something that's in the works? Or has this gone to the state level? Have we gotten any approval?
Well, MEPA is state-level.
Well, that's the EPA, though. It's not the highway and traffic and DOT.
The answer is that I don't really know. But this traffic is... This intersection is going to have to be fixed regardless of the zoning issues. Mr. Bott?
I'd be happy to address the question.
Sure.
What's required. I'm Tom Bott, I'm the town planner here in town书记 here in Carver. And so a project at this site goes through a MEPA review. And in the MEPA review, they looked at traffic, environmental issues, and things like that. And as part of the MEPA process, as part of the MEPA permit, there are baselines where they have to make improvements at. I don't have them in front of me, but I'm gonna go with essentially, if you have X number of trips a day, you have to put a sidewalk in. If you have the next level of trips, you gotta put traffic lights in. So all this is in the MEPA review. We can get it put together for you. It's likely posted on a website somewhere. But essentially, for full build-out for this project, as was presented in the MEPA review, all that stuff has to get done. The traffic lights, the expansion of the roadways, the sidewalks, the bike lanes, all those things that comes with it. They're required under MEPA in order to fully build out the site. At the developer's cost.
So how do we know that we're going to reach the level that we're supposed to be at to have all these stoplights and...
They can't get permits from the state for the work that they want to do if they don't do that work.
Well, this is based on the MEPA process from four years ago, the MEPA report from four years ago. So it's outside of any changes we make. So any changes we make, we'll still have to go back through the MEPA process, which will probably require updating all the...
No, I'm gonna say that the MEPA process is set. So there's thresholds. And to get to those thresholds, they have to do those improvements. So to fully build out the site. And like I said, I don't have those numbers in front of me. I'd be happy to get them for you for tomorrow night's discussion. But they are pretty much required to do those things to fully build out the site that's been presented and reviewed by MEPA.
Right, right, yes. But if we make major changes like we're doing here, it's gonna re-kick in another review by the Mass EPA.
No.
No?
No.
Even with some of the changes we're making, it's not gonna...
To the best of my knowledge, it is not.
And the MEPA study was based on Monday through Friday, 12-hour day?
Once again, I can get you that information. But the traffic study done by VHB, vetted by Massachusetts Environmental Protection Agency, looked at by CERCA, basically said, these are the things they have to do, those are the things they have to get to.
Because I was looking at the traffic study and it based everything on the traffic or within the traffic study in the MEPA process on operational hours of Monday through Friday, 12-hour days. So is this facility proposed to be a 24/7? It is. It's like they see people nodding their head. So that's certainly gonna significantly change some of the numbers in regards to this. And if I remember correctly from the MEPA study, it was how many trips a day? Close to 9,000? Was that correct? 8,000?
8,000 car trips.
900 trips. But that includes trucks and cars and...
No, it was cars only. Trucks were gonna be around 450.
So on top of the...
In half?
On top of the over 8,000...
Trips.
I believe it was 8,600 trips a day.
On a two-lane road.
Was what they recommended, was what was in the study. And I thought that included trucks. But again, it's going higher than that. And that's based on Monday through Friday, 12-hour day. And what sort of safeguards can we provide to keep all the traffic going on and off of 44 rather than keeping them north and south on 58? Because there's a much higher expected cost for the town. I mean, aside from the 7-point-something million dollars, which we're told will be taken up by the developer in regards to this. But then we're gonna have long-term costs in regards to maintenance, roadways, increased services in the town. I understand we got some money from the developer in regards to cover a couple of years' worth of increased services in the town? Is that correct? 3-point-something million dollars?
Four.
What do you mean by a couple of years? We get to keep the equipment.
Right, right. What they're paying for is the expected cost to increase services over the next two or three years. And then after that, that's all those increases. And that was what, 3-point-something million dollars? And that's only for some of the increases, right? Well, what's the long-term cost for this on the services of the town gonna be? If they're gonna cover the minimum cost for a couple of years, then who gets to cover the further-on cost down the line? Police officers, maybe full-time fire department or fire officials. I know the emergency medical system said that they had everything that they needed. But again, there's DPW and the cost of streets and roadways and traffic in the middle of the night. I mean, what sort of safeguards are there in these proposed changes to the bylaws for the town?
If I could just interrupt for a minute. We're looking at the zoning articles now, so we're kind of going off...
Well, no, that's not fair. Bruce, because we're getting a presentation here that's outside of the zoning articles, correct?
Well, I think...
So it's kind of opened the door to ask these questions. And it started with a question in regards to funding in this proposed project that's being presented.
Well, maybe it'd be better if Stephen could finish his presentation and then if you have any questions after that. But we are here for the zoning articles. And so you can look at the zoning article...
Maybe this presentation is asking, is out of line, too. If I'm out of line asking questions in regards to this, maybe this is out of line because I'm asking questions in regards to what's being presented.
Well, I think we should at least give Stephen a chance to do his presentation. And then we'll figure out where we go from there. But we are here to do the zoning articles today.
Then let's get to the zoning articles.
Okay.
So it seems like everyone's already aware of the traffic improvements and supplemental information I was about to present on. But it looks like this slide here is intended to demonstrate to you that VHB has been studying the traffic issue for quite some time. Tocani's excellent points and questions that aren't necessarily directly relevant to tonight's zoning conversation. There are some trip projections that are comparative to other potential uses. And you see here that the warehouse-proposed project does actually provide significantly less traffic impact than other comparable uses, what is allowed by the zoning.
But that doesn't include trucks, correct?
Can you go back?
When will the public be able to ask any questions? That's the very end.
Yeah.
It'll be working.
Again, that's based on a Monday through Friday, 12-hour schedule.
Weekday daily, you're talking 17,000 now.
No, no, that's... If it's a research and development facility. If it's a warehouse, it's the 8,400. And I expect that was cars. Just to clarify.
Well, we don't know what's going in there, right?
These are projections based on allowed uses.
So we could be a research and development facility. So we could be looking at upwards of 17,000, twice what you're proposing, what you're talking about.
Twice what a warehouse would bring.
Okay. Again, twice what you're talking about. You're telling us it's gonna be 8,000. I mean, you throw out numbers. It says it could be upwards of 17,000 because you don't know what's going in there.
If the zoning bylaws are approved, then we're going to build the warehouse with 8,000 cars. If it's not approved, then there are many other uses for the property right now that are buildable by right with no special permitting process. And they would be at 40 feet high. And one of those is a research facility. And they would be able to... Whoever the current owner of the property might sell to, if it's not Hillwood, could come in and do a research facility of 1.8 million square feet, which is what's allowed on that property by the state. And that could generate 17,000 trips a day in car traffic.
So you're saying that the town property doesn't have control of its own property?
No, it's all through special... A lot of it's through special permits, to be fair. And it could be a hospital or it could be a college that comes in. But it could be a planned neighborhood, too. So there are a lot of things that could come in here which are allowed under our bylaws. And most of them, a lot of them are through special permits.
Through special permits.
And a lot of them are not.
Okay, but through special permits.
A lot of them do not require a special permit.
Right, there's a...
So again, what you're saying is the town does not have control of its own property. This is town-owned property, correct?
It is not.
No.
It is owned by Route 44 Development.
It's privately owned.
It's privately owned.
We're looking to change the zoning bylaws to allow a better development than what could go in there.
All right. If you could just let Stephen do his thing. If you could write down your questions, we'll try to answer them afterwards.
Based on this information, VHB created what could be a signalization and traffic flow based on existing conditions pre-COVID and what the capacity analysis suggests. And you can see there's quite a bit more green lights along the way indicating that it's a much easier and fluid flow of traffic with these improvements. So this is some of the background information I hope to share with you without interruption so that you can understand where we are today. And now we get into the zoning. So here we are. Eight zoning changes that we're asking you to approve. And again, stressing, if they're not approved, something can still happen here. A no vote on these things does not necessarily mean a project will not happen. It just simply means you're going to allow them to do these particular things. We're gonna go through each one, one by one. And as we do so... Sharon, did you want to kick off by reading the hearing notice for Article Number 10?
No. You might excuse me for this. But as you can't present changes to the zoning bylaws, I think Bruce has to handle this.
Okay.
So I don't know about that, but that wasn't...
I think the law, I feel I got problems with this. You are not allowed to present these articles. You're presenting them to the planning board. And if we approve them to go to the town meeting, at that point, it is us presenting these warrants. Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5, first paragraph.
All right. So the first is Article 10. It's the Table of Dimensional Requirements and building... And this is about the building height and the GBP, General Business Park... Green Business Park.
Green Business Park.
Yeah, Green Business Park, sorry. So this is an article submitted by the Carver Redevelopment Authority, Table of Dimensional Requirements, Building Height, and the GBP, to see if the town will vote to amend the Carver zoning bylaws, Section 2320, Table of Dimensional Requirements, maximum building height in feet, to increase the maximum building height in the Green Business Park zoning district from 40 feet to a maximum building height of 65 feet. And by replacing the language of footnote Number 11 and 12 with new footnotes 11 and 12 designated in the max building height column of said table with text additions shown in bold, deletions and strike-through or take any other active relative thereto. So is that... Do we have that in back of me, or...
Yes.
Okay.
There are changes to the advertised bylaw language for Article 10. What you see up on the screen is what is being proposed, right, Tom?
Right.
That is different from what was advertised.
So there's several lines being taken out. And then it continues out with standing anything to the contrary in the zoning bylaw building. And that's in bold, so I guess that's being added. Height shall mean the vertical distance measured from the mean finish grade of the ground adjoining the building or improvement to the highest point of such building or improvement, provided that stables, cupolas, stage lofts, penthouses, bulkheads, and other pertinences above roofline shall not be considered as additional stories or considered in determining the height of a building and then in bold, or other improvement. And in bold, rooftop mechanicals and rooftop solar will be included in determining the overhaul height of the building. Okay, and then it goes into regular type 12. 12 municipal facilities may be increased to 40 feet in height, provided they meet all public safety standards. Well, okay, so we're just doing... So this is all part of Article 10, right? Okay. So this was...
I have to interject. This is different.
And then in bold, except that a water tower owned or operated by the North Carver Water District shall be considered municipal facilities and shall not be subject to such height limitations within the GBP district, provided they meet all public safety standards. Okay, so that's it. That's the end of Article 10.
Mr. Chairman, the two slides, this slide and the preceding slide, are the current language that was amended last night. And it has some slight changes from what you read.
Oh, okay.
And those are indicated in red. The word "penthouses" comes up, comes out from Footnote Number 11. And the "machine rooms" is added along with rooftop mechanicals and rooftop solar. And on Footnote Number 12, the... I can't see it. Oh, be subject to height... Shall not exceed 175 feet. So be subject to such height limitation[1559.26] So be subject to such height limitation has been eliminated and exceed 175 feet has been added. And that's for the workout.
So I read it. Does anybody want to discuss this or?
Where's footnote 11 or 12 in? Oh, thank you very much.
Okay, so, so, okay, so basically we're going from, we're changing the G, the Green Business Park from 40 feet height to 65 feet. I mean, that's what this is.
And you're requesting to get rid of, to really get rid of all the setbacks? It looks like subsection 11, footnote 11, is completely crossed off in this. If a building contains more than two stories, minimum requirements for setbacks will be 25 feet every 15 feet above that. Three stories shall be 75 feet. Four stories should be 100 feet. So that, that's all crossed out?
We're not dealing with setbacks at all in this.
But why is it?
That's in footnote 11.
Yeah, footnote 11 is crossed out, so it looks like it's being removed from the article?
No, it's being replaced with a new language.
So is that the original language?
Yes.
So you're striking out the setbacks and you're replacing it with, with this language? Is that, I'm trying to just clarify this, what's going on. So you, you're requesting to get rid of the setbacks and increase the building height? That's really what this article is about? Does the setback today to protect, say, a residential neighborhood that might be bordering?
That's not going to happen.
Well, if there's a residential neighborhood that's bordering the process, you're asking us to strike out all that?
There's no residential.
Bunny's Land, is that it?
Excuse me, do you realize the size of this?
There's no one, no one.
Bunny's, Bunny's Way.
But there, but there's people over there in Plimpton.
Yeah, yes, there are.
That, that actually touch up on this property. Their backyards, their back fences are going to be on the property line.
No, no, not at all.
They're not.
No.
They're not.
I see the Plimpton property line. I see the Plimpton town line, and, and you're telling me there's no residents there whose property abuts that?
If you look at the, excuse me, if you look at the slide which shows where the actual distribution center is going, I think it says supplemental information site layout. If you look at that, that's way, way far away from what you're talking about.
Really? Because I, I see that it's not going to meet the setback requirements that are in the bylaws as now, and I guess, I'm guessing that's why that they've been, they've been struck out.
I don't think that's correct.
Like, I could clearly see that. That's not a 200-foot wide tree that's up there in that corner there, so that's clearly not a 200-foot setback in, in that whole area right there. It might be setback, all right, so I see, yeah, but that's the property line. That's, that's, so who owns the property above it?
The town of Plimpton.
The town of Plimpton or the residents of Plimpton?
The town, it's Plimpton property. We couldn't, we couldn't put the building on Plimpton property.
Right. And there's no residents that live up that street there that border on this property? Because I've heard from people.
Heather's Path, is that what it was?
Yeah. I believe you're correct. So I'm just asking.
And I believe that there was something that was proposed not too long ago, and we're trying to clear some areas out, and we're coming right up to some part, to somebody's back doorstep.
As I remember here, the proposal was to take all the Carver property.
He wants to tell you something.
People in Heather's Path.
GBP, that's why. It's not Green Business Park.
He's talking about back here.
There's plenty of room there, over here that looks on that map.
That's something he's talking about. He's talking about Plimpton line. Do you need setbacks in?
It jags down because it's part of the Green Business Park, it's in my town.
Well, if we can't answer that.
So are you saying you'd be more comfortable if we left those detailed setbacks in?
Well, I think in, I think in the best interest of the residents.
Can we ask, can we ask the town planner?
What, you got insurance? Go ahead, I'm not going to stop you from asking. I want, I'm here for information.
Since we have to care about people, I mean, they...
This is way far away. This is, I think he's making his case. You see how it jumps down?
Yeah.
But that's actually part of the property, it's just not part of the Green Business Park. So we have to draw here.
Give me just a second. Wait, you're right.
Nobody said this was supposed to be used.
All right. So once again, I'm Tom Bond, the interim town planner here in Carver. And there, the setbacks in the Green Business Park right here are 50-foot setbacks for the front, 40-foot setbacks for the rear, and 40-foot setbacks for the side for any building. 50-foot front setbacks, 40-foot setback for the side, and 40-foot setback for the rear. Footnote 11 deals with if a building is more than two stories high, then that setback is increased by 25 feet. So they're not eliminating the setbacks, they're just changing how they calculate them. So those setbacks remain in place for, for Green Business Park and replaced with this new language, new footnote that says, notwithstanding anything to the contrary, the building height means where you measure from the ground to the highest point of such building. So the footnote just elaborates on how you go about measuring things, it doesn't change the setback. It's just a change in language that's been proposed.
So I, hold on, I, I disagree with that.
So if you would, the chair typically recognizes people at meetings, so you direct the question to the chair.
If you say through you, Mr. Chair, and then, yeah.
Just because.
So why is, why is most of 11 lined out that it's not going to be, that it's, that's being stricken from the bylaws?
I cannot tell you the intent because I've not been the person who's been working on this bylaw. I can tell you what's before you, and that is the amendment to footnote 11. I have no concept of legislative intent.
All right, so then I will have to politely disagree with your assessment that they are on, that the setback calculations are not being changed.
I, I didn't see where you found the calculations, Tom.
Paul wants to know, he's talking about here, because that's Caber property, right? He is Caber property.
It's Tom Towneau.
Yeah, it's just a Shaw's place, the back of Shaw's.
It's not, it's that other type of property and that other map we looked at last night.
So what the, the new zoning amendment? Excuse me, through the chair. I see the max building height is 40 feet, and it references up section 11, which explains the height requirements. So for every story after two stories, it goes up 25, the setbacks increase 25 feet, but I, I don't see it. I don't see it anywhere else. I saw it a little lost.
Sorry, this isn't, this is, yeah, this is Shaw's.
That's what we're striking out.
That's what you're striking out.
This is the tail of, please next to Shaw's.
I wonder if we should just move on to the next and, if we, if we, if we could maybe move on to Article 11 and, and table this until we could do this tomorrow, tomorrow night, until we get, gather further information on this?
Mr. Chair, through you.
Yeah, I mean, if that's agreeable to.
Yeah, I think there are other things, though, that, that, we can keep this brief, but I think that there are other things that need to be discussed here. First of all, on the, the, this, this drawing that shows the building, the dimensions of this building are 2,000 feet long by 600 feet long. Based on that and doing a rough scale, the closest dwelling to the northwest corner, northeast corner of this building on Heather's Path in Plimpton is approximately 1,200 feet away.
And setbacks are based on property lines, not, not buildings?
I know, but if it starts at, at 40 feet, as, as Mr. Bond just said, and even if adding 25 feet for every story, and this is a warehouse, so in effect, it's really only going to be one story.
It's based on, it's based on footage, so for every 15 feet high?
Every 15 feet considered.
All right, so 15, for every 15 feet high, over and above, what, what is, where does it start?
It'd be roughly 100-foot setback.
It would be roughly a 100-foot setback.
Right, from the property line.
All right, and this building is approximately at its shortest point, which is, this little indentation here is based on the dimension of the building is approximately 200 feet. So the setback.
Right, but the, the parking lot, driveways, and curbing, and all of that's considered in the setback.
Then, then it wouldn't be any problem at all leaving the language in?
There's a difference between a building setback and, I mean, building setback, the setbacks that you see on the form eight is for the building. It's not for, for the, for the, like, the metal building, concrete building, or whatever it is. It's not for parking lots. That's different, that's a different thing.
Right. No, I'm saying, let's say it's building in the...
Do, do we want to continue with this, or do you want to get some more information?
I just wanted to point that out, that there's a, they're going to meet any setback requirements that they need to, and that the nearest resident in Plimpton is approximately 1,200 feet from the corner of the building.
Their property line is?
Their property line is approximately, I don't know, I can't see. I would say it's probably 600 feet.
Okay.
That's.
Yeah, don't thank you.
Between five and 600.
I don't have that map you're working on.
What was, what was up there?
So like I said, leaving the, leaving the language in, it should be no problem.
It's for the Green Business, this only affects the Green Business Park. So I guess I would, we can consider leaving the language in? These were reviewed by K.P. Law, so I didn't much.
Yeah, I think that we can, I can, I think that we can try to determine for tomorrow night why it was taken out.
Okay, all right.
I think that's a valid question.
So we won't vote to recommend this other, tonight?
You were going to vote on everything tomorrow night?
Well, I had a discussion with Tom, I think.
I'm only going by what I read last night.
I, I thought that we'd vote to recommend on things that, that came up, and, and, but if there was questions on some, that we would hold those articles off until tomorrow night to have those questions answered.
Okay, so we're going to have each of these individually, and if you want to take a vote on this one, but I think we should ask the public?
Sure. Mr. Chair, through you, I do have one more thing I would like to say about the building height, and it addresses something that Mr. Shea said earlier this evening when we were talking about traffic. The traffic study that was done, it was done by VHB, who was the engineer, but it was, the data was culled from the Institute of Traffic Engineers, which is a, a group of, of traffic professionals who offer their services and do traffic studies for communities across the nation. And their determination was that the traffic numbers that we saw before, approximately 8,400 trips per day for a vehicle, for a car, and 450 to 500 trips for a truck per day would be the same regardless of a 40-foot height or a 65-foot height.
Correct, yes. So, right, I expect that the tax income from the town isn't going to change that much drastically either between 40 and 65.
I, I disagree.
Well, at 40 feet, if they're putting solar and various other things on, at the various heights, they'll bring it up to roughly 55 feet, so, and at 65 feet, that's going to be all included, so frankly, the, the tax change isn't going to be all that beneficial.
I, I, I will disagree, and I will tell you why. What the, what the developer is looking for is a 40-foot clear height inside the building, from the floor to the bottom structure that holds up the roof. That will enable a distributor to put in the current state-of-the-art automated racking systems, which are much more expensive than standard shelves like you find at Home Depot. And that brings in additional taxes from the personal property taxes. So there's a huge difference in income that we can expect from this going to the 40-foot interior height, which is...
Do you have numbers for that?
I believe that there was a financial impact study that was done by an independent consultant, and I believe the difference in the, in the numbers was approximately $800,000 a year for 40 feet and $1.4 million a year for 65. So it's a difference of $600,000 a year.
Right, which percentage-wise on, say, our town budget would be a little under 1%? A little over 1%? I'm sorry, that's, that's wrong. What's our budget? $54 million, so $600,000 would be, yeah, just under 1%. So I don't see it making a drastic impact on, on the taxes and, and being super beneficial to the town. You mentioned the traffic study, and I want to remind you that the traffic study is based on a Monday through Friday 12-hour workday and is not based on a 24/7.
That was the MEPA study. Mr. Chair, through you, may I, may I just ask, we have a gentleman here who is a counsel for Hillwood. Mr. Smolak?
Should I go?
Yes, please. Just introduce yourself.
No, you can, you can use that one.
You can just, you can just stand there and, and talk, and speak loudly, just if, if this is okay with you.
No, this is fine. I mean, I just want to remind everybody, this isn't, what we're here tonight is, we're not here to approve or disapprove a project. And, and somebody can tell me if I'm wrong.
That's tomorrow night.
No, we're not voting on this, this whole, we're just, we're just, we're just looking at articles to allow this type of project in this area. That's all. We're not, and I don't think we're 100% sure, the, I don't, we're not 100% sure exactly what's going to go in there, but I mean, these things, these articles that we're proposing are just things that need to be added to, to bylaws to allow this type of project to happen.
I'm not arguing against the project.
So I kind of have a feeling that some people think that we're actually voting on the...
I tend to be in favor of the project, but I'm trying to understand the long-term issues that we might, as a town, have to deal with, especially out of our pockets.
Well, I think if any, you know, if we go through these articles tonight, and then later on, this is all going to come before the planning board anyway to be approved. And generally, when you have a project come before the, the planning board, if they were going to do this type of project, you, then you would see a detailed traffic study and, and all the things, it'd be special permit and, and all that, so we'd see all that there. We're, we're not doing that tonight, we're just having, we're just going through these articles for, to add to our bylaws to allow this to happen, that's all. Whether it happens or not is, is something.
I somewhat disagree with you a little bit on that, Bruce, because it's, it's this form here that's going to help. I, I apologize. My voice doesn't carry very well.
Well, you have to really speak up tonight because we, we don't have the best microphone system.
So what I'm saying is, it's this meeting tonight is to inform the people who are going to be voting on these articles, once they, once they actually get it to town meeting. The people who are voting need to know as much information as possible and what they're facing if they're going to vote for these things. Otherwise, everything gets shut down.
Well, yeah, and I think that's what we're trying to do, take an article.
If you want, if you want the, the votes to go forward, you're going to have to provide as much information and flesh this out as much as possible tonight and tomorrow night.
Yes, I agree. All right, I'm sorry to interrupt. If you could just introduce yourself again, please.
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and other members of the board. My name is John Smolak, attorney for Hillwood. And first of all, I want to, I appreciate the opportunity to have a discussion with the board and to try to explain some of the items that were discussed this evening, because I, I just want to clarify, because after all, this project is going to go through a number of different hurdles, both at the state level as well as local level as well, and it's our, it's upon us to convince you that this project works for, through a lot of different factors, like traffic and the like, so that was discussed. But, but just as a, as a general matter, I, I wanted to talk about the permitting that was discussed at the very beginning. The MEPA process was conducted before we got involved, and it was based upon warehouse and industrial use. And so all the traffic counts are based on that use. If there was ever going to be a change, we'd have to go back to the, through MEPA review to have those, those traffic numbers changed. That is not our intent. Secondly, if the town, if we're fortunate enough to learn that the town approves these zoning warrant articles, that's just the very beginning of the process, as you know, as a board, because of the fact that we'll have to obtain multiple special permits from, from the planning board, and we're going to have to make a demonstration that the traffic works, that infrastructure works, and everything else works for this project and for the town and for the neighborhood. And so when we talk about review, when, if, if the zoning articles are adopted, the next step would be going to the planning board, where the planning board would hire its own independent peer review professionals to make sure that the information that we provide to the board is confirmed by your own professionals who would be reviewing the project. So, so, you know, we view this, on behalf of Hillwood, we view this as a partnership of the town, and, and we've worked a lot with various departments of the town as well to come up with some various agreements, again, all premised upon changes in zoning, which would include a community benefits agreement would be with the town, which is approximately $6.7 million in value. And there are some salary, salary provisions in there, really designed to be triggered between the time that we go through the permitting process to the time the building is built, and after which time we feel that the revenue, based on the revenue projections for the new growth that would occur as a result of this building, would be able to cover, more than cover municipal services, well-inexcess municipal services. So that, that's the reason why the provisional staffing was increased for the short term in order to cover the town in the event the town needed those emergency services between the time of permitting construction to the time that the building is actually built, after which time the assessor will assess the value of the property, and then based on that evaluation, and as was pointed out in terms of the tax rate, would identify the revenue that would be coming to the town. So, so that's just the background. And again, this is the very first step of the process. There has been a state process, and that state process involved, as was discussed, a traffic report or a study that was submitted at the time to the state. as was discussed, a traffic report or a study that was submitted at the time to the state. Massachusetts DOT did review the traffic counts and reviewed the infrastructure requirements. And as a result of that, it has developed a set of mitigation purposes of traffic based on warehouse and distribution facilities that would be developed. Now, yes, traffic has maybe changed in three or four years, but we're going to have to revisit that with new traffic numbers and present to you, the board, that the traffic remains and still works based on the latest data, led to new traffic studies and to create new traffic counts. And again, the MIPA review was done before we got involved, but our our project is substantially identical to what was presented in that report, and that's frankly what, one of the factors that attracted Hillwood to this, to this site, in addition to a number of other factors. So so again, that's just the background that I wanted to explain. And, you know, hopefully, as we get through the process, and you'll you'll get a better feeling and understanding. And I understand that a lot of issues may come up this evening. A lot of them are site plan review-related issues that that you, as the board, would be dealing with at the time. But but these zoning changes are really designed to to provide, to meet what the market is is looking for in terms of warehouse and distribution facilities today. Because it's changed, it's changed dramatically, as you know, with with all these other facilities that are that are developing and how everyone is getting their packages delivered to their houses these days. So the warehouse and distribution type of of uses has been changed, changing over the years. And so in terms of of this process again, and I don't want to repeat myself, but again, it's going to be thoroughly reviewed, and we're going to have to convince you, as the planning board, and as well as the other citizens of the town, that this project works based on a number of different factors. Getting back to the question of building height, there is a provision, from what I understand, in terms of footnote eleven. We talked to a lot of different people who couldn't figure out how that footnote really works. It does talk about setbacks, but only in the context of building height. And so what we wanted to do is to provide some certainty as to as to maximum building height, instead of going through a formula. And so the reason why we, again, why we did that is because we wanted to make sure that not only the voters at the town meeting understand what the actual maximum height is, because your current footnote doesn't limit height, it just limits setbacks. You can have limitless height under that footnote. And so.
And that's limited by the the chart.
Well, it's, well, when you factor in the setbacks, it goes up. But but beyond that, again, we're trying to provide certainty so that it's very clear as to what the maximum height might be. And in terms of the difference between a forty versus a sixty-five-foot height, what I understand, and I'm not the market person, but but that really makes a difference in terms of the quality of tenant that you can attract to this property. And it may not seem at first glance that it really makes a difference, but it really does. And and so the higher the quality of the tenant, the greater the value this property is to the town. And as a result, and and the greater the value of the property to the town, the higher the tax revenue generation that would occur. So that was the thought process behind, and that's the thought process behind why buildings have to be much, or fairly, a bit higher than what traditional warehouses used to be, because this is where the market is for those quality tenants. And I think we'd rather, and I assume that the town would rather have a quality, a much higher quality tenant as opposed to what could be built there today, but the fact is that there haven't been a lot of bites at this property for many years. And so if this could have been built at forty feet and been very successful, it would have been done already. And so, but we feel that Hillwood has the capabilities, certainly, and and the desire to work with and partner with the with the town of Carver, including his board, both boards. So I hope that explains a little bit of the background and our thought process.
No, if it's all right. You understand this is going to be one of the ten biggest facilities of this size in North America, one of the twenty biggest facilities of this size in the world. So it would be who of us to ask every question, to vet everything that comes across us? This is one of the biggest facilities that America is going to going to see according to the statistics within the past year. I think they were from June of twenty twenty-one, were the latest ones I got. But it would certainly, I would be remiss in my responsibilities, this town, if I didn't ask every question that came to my head, whether it was relevant or not to the discussion.
We welcome those questions.
Thank you.
Because the fact is that the more input we get from the public, the better off our project is, because we have a better understanding of the community. So that's how Hillwood thinks, and that's how Hillwood's project team thinks as well. And so, no, absolutely, we expect a lot of questions. We expect people to be skeptical, because frankly, I would be too for stepping into this process if I were stepping in brand-new. But but the fact is that we've worked very hard with with the town of Carver and and folks like at the RDA and other boards and commissions and the district, North Carver Water District, to to accommodate and to be able to have a back and forth so that we could better understand what the needs of Carver are, and so that our project can fit into the neighborhood and the surrounding area as best as we can, because we understand this planning process, I didn't realize it went fifty years, but from what I had read, it was at least thirty years or so in terms of the process getting to this point. And I think frankly, the town has done a great job in planning because you've brought someone here who is very interested and very motivated to to work with the town to not only provide a different service, but also to provide some additional benefits to the town as well. That's how it works. So so I hope that clarifies things. We're here to answer any questions that you have, if the chair would like us to answer questions, but but that, that's really the background and and what we're what we're doing here, what we're all about.
So, yeah, so like we said, we still have to go through, when it comes to the planning board, we have to go to site plan review. And a lot of these questions, it will, I imagine, will know exactly what's going to be built there, the size and all this. And then we can, specific questions can be asked and answered at the time. This is just kind of something that they're looking for, but, you know, we're still, like I say, these, these these articles are to allow this, because our bylaws currently don't have everything in them to allow this type of project, so. But, you know, whether, but there still will be a lot of time and presentation to the planning boards and different boards before this becomes a final project or approved project. Anything else that I said, or hopefully, anything I said was correct.
Right, I was just wondering, Mr. Shea, did Mr. Smolak's explanation of the strike-through on the on the setbacks clarify things for you?
That he wanted more clarification regarding, see, I understood them, that's, and that was maybe the issue, that I understood them, and maybe he was having some difficulty with them. So I understood what the the footnotes meant, and I, I think setbacks are important from other people's property.
I I agree with you, but I think that what Mr. Smolak said was that the, it it was incongruous to the rest of what the what the bylaw stated.
Well, he seemed to think it was a little vague. I I haven't, I thought it was, it was pretty clear in my mind, so.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, John.
A question on this. So Mr. Smolak stated earlier that based on the previous language, footnote eleven, it would, there's really no limit to the height based on, based on the previous language. So if that's how he's enjoying it, then why do we need to go through this whole process? And.
But I'm not sure.
I believe what it was and said it was, it was vague, because we have a forty-foot height limit in that, and it goes further on in that to say, you know, fifteen feet will be considered a a story. So that would be two and two-thirds stories to forty.
I understand, I understand that, but Mr. Smolak's language was that if there's really no limit to the height, because of this.
Under the footnote eleven.
Under footnote eleven.
Right.
Which is what controls setbacks in the green, in the in the green business park.
But then that would put, you know, the planning board in a difficult position, because you could have somebody come in front of you with a fifty-five-foot building where the.
That's clearly outlined.
I defer to Mr. Shea then.
It's clearly outlined in the building height, maximum building heights.
I think what Mr. Smolak was saying, though, if you read what has been struck through here, it talks about adding twenty-five feet to everyone, and it says.
I get he wants things set in stone, but then I like things set in stone, too, but it's, this process isn't going to bring it, because we don't know what's coming, so.
All right, it, the, the current part of footnote eleven defines the story as being fifteen feet high, and it also gives an example of a building containing four stories shall not be located closer than one hundred feet. So four stories times fifteen feet is a sixty-foot building. So the footnote talks about a building that is not allowed at a forty-foot height. And I think that is what.
I think that's where it's conflicting.
A four-story building could be forty feet tall.
But the definition in the footnote says a story if without.
Right, without, without actual separations between the levels.
It's fifteen feet.
Right.
So a four-story building would be sixty feet high. And that's what that, that's what that footnote says.
That's, it says barring the separation of levels, that fifteen feet shall be considered a full story. So it would be about a seventy-five-foot setback with a sixty-foot building, if you look at it that way.
Right, but for instance.
But it also says where a building for improvement is not divided.
Right, such as a warehouse.
Such as a warehouse.
It becomes fifteen feet in height.
So this would be at forty foot.
But a building still can contain four stories and be forty feet tall.
Yes, but if it, it can, but it could also be, it could also be sixty feet.
Well, it wouldn't be allowed in that bylaws, because that's all.
It separates the non-divided building to be considered fifteen feet for a story.
Yes, it does, and it also says in the same footnote that you.
So that would say then if the building is four feet, is forty feet tall and is a ware, and is a warehouse, then you would go by what the setbacks should be at forty feet, not at four stories.
Yeah, well, which would be a seventy-five-foot setback?
It'd be a seventy-five-foot setback. A building that's four stories, that's divided, would have a hundred-foot setback.
And it says.
Non-divided at fifteen feet each would be seventy-five feet.
Sixty, sixty feet would be a hundred.
No, you're right, seventy.
But regardless, I think we're just.
Yes, but the.
It's pretty close to apples and apples, it's like.
The example stated here says, it says a four-story building would be a hundred feet, and that a story, if if there aren't actual floors, would be considered fifteen feet. So if you put the four stories without a floor times fifteen feet, it allows sixty feet.
It could still be one story.
Not by definition.
You would break it down by fifteen, you would break it down fifteen feet at a time.
When a building is not divided into stories, like a warehouse, it says a story will be considered fifteen feet in height.
But it is still a one-story building, you would break it up into fifteen-foot sections to determine what the setbacks would be.
The first two floors, the first thirty feet would be a twenty-five-foot setback, and then there would be twenty-five feet added on for every fifteen feet above that.
Since, since we could clearly debate this for another hour.
Right, yeah, yeah, I think we'll try to get a clarification of this for tomorrow night.
At this time, I would like to see if anyone in the public would like to address sixty-five foot.
Yeah, if it's, if it's.
You go to the podium, please. And what is your name, please?
Donna Foran, twenty-seven eight Village Way, Carver. I just wanted to say, first of all, thank you to everybody that's here. You guys obviously have worked hard to put something in Carver that we don't have. I just had a question on the car statistics that you had and the trucks. What is it now? That was, that was my question, and you don't have to tell me now.
I know, that's twelve thousand.
Maybe tomorrow night.
According to the MIPA review, right now, well, right now, pre-COVID, they estimated twelve thousand cars passed through that intersection currently, per day.
Per day.
Correct.
Huh, interesting. Right, and then the other thing I just wanted to say was thank you to Hillwood for coming to Carver. And then I have one more question. the property value, and I I had someone from the RDA explain to me about the personal property. So it does make sense to me that a little bit more footage would bring more income to the town of Carver, and so that to me is important. But on the other hand, are we going to be needing twenty-four-hour fire department, twenty-four-hour EMS department, twenty-four-hour DPDW department? That was my concern. So I don't need an answer.
We already have.
Oh, well, let me.
Okay.
We already have a twenty-four-hour fire department, a twenty-four-hour police department, and twenty-four-hour EMS department.
Right.
Why, the police, and I don't know if you've seen any of the videos, the select board meeting of about two weeks ago on Tuesday, around the fifteenth or so?
Eighteenth, I think.
Eighteenth. Chief Weston, who's been negotiations with his fire consultant in Hillwood and Police Chief Dufly and EMS Chief Mike Bryan have worked for almost a year in order to ensure that if they have this to protect with an additional population, basically equal to the school nine months of the year, but daily, that they would be able to protect that without, you know, one second of detriment to the residents of Carver. To that end, there's a lot of things the town didn't have in order to do that, and one of them is a ladder truck. Our tallest ladder in Carver right now is thirty-two feet. So there was a negotiation of a community benefits agreement, which we'll go into detail in the, at town meeting, but it also included additional police cruiser, one or two, I forget. Just two police cruisers and two additional officers, which will be paid for by the developer for, the officer will be paid for for three years, I believe, two, three, three, sorry, I'm mixing my. And it also included an additional EMS staff and an ambulance, because we have two ambulances now, if they go out at the same time, we don't have a third one. So all of that has been diligently researched, and and it was all to the benefit of the town of Carver, which Hillwood is offered to pay if, you know, they, if they come to town. Then not only will they be protected, but all the rest of us will be too.
And then my only other comment was the reason why on the three years, according to someone on your RDA, it was, because after that is when we expect to start collecting taxes and things like that.
And what, for the staff paying for it?
Yeah.
That was all, that was decided by Chief Dufly, and he had done his due diligence by calling other towns, all the chiefs have been calling other chiefs all over the country, how they handled something like this coming to their town. And Chief Dufly said he feels that 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 would be adequate, and then, you know, he's been building towards trying to get a twenty-man staff, officers, and this gives him two more. We only need one more after that. But it's expected to be rolled into the the town budget in three years.
And then the only other comment I had, if we didn't expand to the sixty-foot, anybody can go in there, and then we don't have any background as far as Hillwood wants to provide us with some type of funding for our buyer and lease, then if we only stayed at forty feet, we might not even get that offer from another developer.
Bingo.
Yeah, we shouldn't be considering that.
But we don't.
Why shouldn't we be concerned with that?
That's not, because this is based on what the.
That's not, because this is based on what the expected costs of this project are going forward for the next three years. This is, this is specific to this project, and it shouldn't be considered when taking the zoning bylaws. The zoning bylaws are meant for the safety and well-being of the town, and frankly, that any money involved in this is, should be beyond our consideration.
Thank you for sharing that, but I just wanted to say, if we don't do anything, if we, if we don't do anything, something is very definitely going to go there. There are several things allowed by right there. The example I generally use is equal to 80 Walmart supercenters can fill that space. Or, you know, with the help from the water district, which they wouldn't get as much back, but it could be housing, probably, I think 1,500 houses.
Well, that's not necessary, too, it's very specific on the housing aspects.
It's multi-family.
No, it allows planned neighborhood development to a special permit. And whether the planning board felt that a planned neighborhood development would trump over commercial aspects in this town is a question that is left to be answered.
Well, I got one more ending to my standing up and asking so many questions. I did my homework, and I called, and I researched, and I didn't just come up here and just vaguely know those facts because I just guessed at it, and I called, and I did my homework. And I also want to say, you know, my heart and soul is in this town, as well as probably everybody else in this room, and my family has been here an awful long time, and this means a lot. And I thank everybody for the work, and I thank everybody for the question, and no question is stupid, every question is important, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Is it, is it? I say, so after three years, the town puts the bill, right?
Yeah.
And if we need another fire department, another firehouse, we'd have to build another firehouse, right?
Another firehouse?
Yeah.
A house?
Like the one in North Carver, you know, where they put the ladder truck in there?
Well, this is the one in Center Carver.
Center Carver has space for the ladder truck.
I understand that, but, you know, when you put that building in, you put more people in the town. You have to spread things out more, can't leave everything in the center of town, right?
I don't know what you're saying.
Part, part of the mitigation agreement includes Hillwood doing partial funding to a reconfiguration of the North Carver Firehouse.
But again, after three years, Carver picks up the bill for full-time fire, fire dealers.
That was a decision made by Chief Dufly.
So it'll actually cost the town money?
The expectation is that this project will bring in a couple of million dollars in revenue to the town, and it certainly is going to cover the cost of a couple of policemen per year.
So if it went even to a 40-foot building, would it do the same thing?
Not necessarily, they might not be amendable.
A 40-foot building, this agreement could go away.
They wouldn't be amendable, they, you'd be, you know...
And if Hillwood go away, goes away, that does not mean that a 40-foot warehouse distribution center will not go there. There could be somebody else.
We certainly want commercial development in that area. But a quick question, where is the next 65-foot commercial building in regards to where we are now? What's the next closest building?
I believe Fall River. There's a 1.3 million square foot building in Fall River that is an Amazon facility. It splits the Fall River Free Town Line.
So Fall River and Boston, those are the closest 65-foot facilities?
They share.
As of right now, yes. But according to Mr., Mr. Cole, other towns in this area are, are in the same process we are in changing their zoning to 65 feet, so they're going to become more prolific.
Is there anyone else who wants to discuss the 65-foot bylaw? Mr. Chairman, how does your board feel? Do you want more information on these, on footnote 11?
How do you feel? Have you been answered, or do you think we should table this one and try to get answers to some of your questions? Or do you think they're still pertinent?
I think it should be, it should remain in there. I, I don't see taking it out as, as any benefit, but, um, I am, I don't have, I think all my questions in regards to this one article are answered.
All right, well, we could, uh... So, uh, so I guess what we're looking for is the planning board to vote on whether to recommend this to the, to town meeting.
If I, if I might, only, only certain parties, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, I can't read it verbatim because I don't have access to the internet here, but Mass State Law 40A, Section 5, Paragraph 1, limits, "Who can propose zoning bylaw changes? And it's limited to the city council, board of selectmen, board of appeals, and individual owning land to be affected by the change or adoption of the bylaw. At the request of registered voters, of which it would take 10, the planning board, a regional planning agency, or through the town charter." And as such, only the planning board can move these articles to town meeting. The RDA is neither a regional planning agency or in the, mentioned in the town charter. So, "Zoning ordinances or bylaws may be adopted from time to time, changed by amendment, addition, or repeal, but only in the manner here and after provided. Adoption or change of zoning ordinances or bylaws may be initiated by the submission to the city council or board of selectmen of a proposed zoning ordinance or bylaw by a city council, a board of selectmen, a board of appeals, by an individual owning land to be affected by change or adoption by request of registered voters of the town pursuant to Section 10 of Chapter 39, by 10 registered voters in the city, by a planning board, by a regional planning agency, or by other methods provided by municipal charter." It does not provide that the RDA can put forth local changes to zoning or bylaws, and we're here to prove these, to bring these forward to town meeting. Unless the RDA...
Yes, Tom, can you have an, yes?
Yeah, why don't we ask town council for an...
Okay. All right, so we'll continue to go through these articles, whether to, should we vote on them or not? Probably...
I think...
Just, probably just go through them and get any questions?
Because we've got the benefit of two nights in a row and a number of questions, my thought was, have that discussion, if we're done with the public part, we can close the hearing, but come back and vote those recommendations of the board in the event that there are these kind of questions that are starting to linger down here.
Okay.
So if the board's comfortable with a particular article, you can close the public hearing. The staff and all still gets to talk in the absence of an open vote.
So each, each one, we have to close the public hearing?
That'd be my rec, because you've got a lot of moving parts here.
Okay.
So if you have one you're comfy with, you know, you go, okay, we closed the hearing on that. But I would vote, mention, you know, voting those recommendations tomorrow in a whole, because any of those questions that may come up, that's my recommendation.
And you asked that, in regards to striking Section 11, it, it might be favorable if provisions for screening from neighboring properties was provided? And that might be something to consider.
Why isn't KP law here?
I think that comes under the special permitting process, wouldn't that come under the site plan meeting?
It's not specifically outlined in our bylaws in regards to the green business zone, whereas the setbacks are, so some, something to think about or consider.
I don't think at this point we can introduce too much new. We just have to go to...
This is what the planning board can edit or change any articles.
So you want screening?
It's, it's just something to consider, yes.
Can you give, can you send me some wording on that tomorrow?
I, I think I could muddle through something along those lines, yes.
Okay, send it to Tom Bott, copy me?
I will.
Thank you.
That'd be great, thanks. It's a lot easier to do what you want, if you want.
Mr., through you, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Mr. Shea, if you look at the screen behind you, that is a, that is photographed from the on-ramp of Route 44 West heading towards Middleborough. In the upper left-hand corner, you can see where it says Building A, the outline of the 65-foot building as proposed if it were to be built. That is the only area in Carver or Plinton where you can see the building.
From Route 44?
From the on-ramp.
Well, I could, I could be on Route 44 and see that whole area.
No, you can't, not really.
You could see, you could see the rest of the tree, right, so that little house that was out there, or...
That's from across the meadow, across the swamp that's here. I mean, if you can see it through the trees, but any screening here doesn't get to see through that, too.
So the, that's, I thought that's where the water tower is going, so...
No. The building is on the left-hand, upper left-hand corner.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, do you want to close the...
I'm taking, you didn't do a site visit with us, did you?
Was there anybody else in the audience that wanted to speak about Article 10? All right, so, um, entertain a motion to close the public hearing on Article 10.
Great, so who makes that motion?
I'll second that.
So we have a motion by Mr. Shea, a second by Ellen Sedillo. Further discussion? Okay, those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, so that's unanimous, okay. All right, so we'll move on to the next, we'll discuss this. So it's Article 11. And Article 11, Article 11 submitted by the Carver Redevelopment Authority, "Height of Certain Accessory Structures," "See if the town will vote to amend the Carver zoning bylaw. Article 6, accessory building and structure as shown below with the additions shown in bold and deletions in strike-through, or take any other action related thereto." So accessory building or structure shall mean a building or structure subordinate to a principal building or structure and customarily used to serve the purpose of that principal building. A building is accessory, accessory only where a principal building exists on the same lot. No accessory building or structure may be higher than 25 feet or 10 feet less than the height of the principal building or structure on the lot, whatever is greater and then involved, except for, except that a structure or structures such as a water tower or a tank used for potable water supply or fire protection purposes use shall not be subject to such height limitation. And then it goes back to regular type, and accessory buildings serving the needs of residents of a dwelling may include the following: A, a garage, tool shed, shop, wellhouse, not exceeding a floor area of 700 square feet; and B, barn or building used to house animals or poultry and not to exceed a floor area of 600 square feet. So what was changed here is, what was in bold type was, except that a structure or structures such as water tower or tank used for potable water supply for fire protection purposes use shall not be subject to such height limitation. So that's what's changed.
Amendments to the advertisement, which includes the striking of the ready.
All right, so, and so then there was further changes. So actually now, what the change reads, it says, "Except that a structure or structures such as a water tower or tank used for potable water supply or fire protection purposes for a non-residential use shall not be subject to such height limitations." So for non-residential use.
Was added back? Was stricken and then added back?
Add it back in.
Oh, was added back in, all right, all right. All right, so, yes, if, any questions by the board members?
There's no bylaws in regards to this to cover water towers for non-residential purposes? I strongly recommend changing the word "non-residential" to "municipal." The town has a lock-grade leeway, and you're asking to open a can of worms for leaving it wide open for non-residential?
I don't understand this logic.
You mean municipal as in own? Or municipal as in surface?
As in the municipality uses it, in the town, North Carver Water District. If you open it up for non-residential purposes, there's no reason that commercial water supplies or towers are going up all over town based on 175 square foot, they would have the right to do so. Because this isn't specific to the Green Business Park. This is a very broad accessory use structure bylaw for the entire town. And if, as I understand it, that this water tower is to be used for the municipality or the North Carver Water District, I would strongly recommend changing "non-residential" to "municipal."
Well, do...
Article 11, its accessory structure is...
I mean, do we know what this water tower is going to be used for? Is it just going to be used for the site, the Green Business Park, or is it going... So it's, it's going to be an improvement for the entire system?
Entire system will benefit from, from the standby.
Yes, the increased pressure, increased water, everything, but it's for municipal purposes, correct?
It's for other...
Unless it's privately owned.
Oh, yes, okay, please.
Mr. Chairman, Tom, just to clarify, this, this particular provision, there were two types of water systems that it proposed. One is the municipal system for the North Carver Water District. Also, the, the fire chief also wanted us to make sure that there was sufficient onsite water for firefighting protection purposes. And so that, that has not yet been designed. And so what we're looking for, so that onsite firefighting capability is not going to be something that would be owned by the municipality if it's privately owned. That's why we can't have it changed as a municipal.
Okay, I see, so, but we, we're still going to have to narrow this down, otherwise I'm going to build a 175-foot water tower in my backyard next week.
Well, if it's within the...
I'm just saying, it's, I'm not going to do that, but if the potential is out there and something needs to be tried to bring this down.
This is very specific, I don't know why he's off on...
It's not for just the Green Business Park, it's for exceptional structure.
So if you, we have no problem if you want to allocate to the Green Business Park? If that narrows it down for you?
That's fine, as, as long as it's not such a broad and open statement, I think it's, it's a vast improvement.
Thank you.
But unfortunately, you know, the, the only way this could work, it'd have to be attached to the, the North Carver Water Well for the...
For Green Business Park.
It's just not like people all over town can put these things up because you don't, they don't have the water supply to do this, but...
I, I mean, I would really like a fire suppression system.
It would be within the Green Business Park.
You can understand where I'm coming from, though, I mean, Ericson's might want a, a fire suppression system down in the area, or, you know...
Mr. Mr. Bott?
Please.
Can we limit this to just the Green Business Park? Because it's going in definitions.
Yeah, I venture to say, I'm, I'm making a list of questions. Then I'll be running by with town council, we talk in the morning. So I've got a couple of questions from the previous notes, as well as this one as well.
Excuse me, if you, if you have the language like Mr. Shea's asking, the wording I'm saying, within the Green Business Park, there...
That, that would work, just...
Thank you very much, thank you.
The water, through the chair?
Yes, please, if you could give us a name again and address.
Donna Foran, through the chair, the water tower at South Meadow Village, is that...
It's 151. Is that what you're going to ask her?
Yes. Yeah.
Went through zoning, 151.
All right, anything else before we move on to the next? Well, are there any other questions by the public? All right, any other, board members have any other questions? Because we could close the public hearing on Article 11, and, and then Mr. Bott can, you know, make the alterations after seeing, talking to town council for tomorrow night. All right, seeing nobody coming for... All right, seeing nobody coming forward with any more questions, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing on Article 11.
I'll make that same motion.
I'll second that. Can you, Shea, second that motion?
Okay, so we had Ellen Sedillo made the motion. Can you, Shea, second? Further discussion? Seeing none, none. Those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. That's unanimous. Okay, Article 12. Article 12 submitted by the Carver Redevelopment Authority. Access driveways to non-residential premises. And this is to see if the town will vote to amend the Carver zoning bylaw, Section 3350, driveway design as shown below in addition, with additions shown in bold and deletions in strike-through or take any other action related thereto. So, 3350 driveway design. Access driveways to non-residential premises shall be, and in bold, a minimum of, and then back to regular, 12 feet wide for one-way traffic and a minimum of, a minimum of in bold, 24 feet for two-way traffic. So, any discussion?
It's just to allow for wider roads for bigger trucks?
Non-residential only. So, I don't know that we have to make this specific to the Green Business Park, but it's just, it's clarifying for the, the minimum is 24 feet for, and I guess it can be wide, so. But it's specific to non-residential commercial.
Okay.
Is there any questions there concerning the driveways? No?
All right. So, seeing no questions, let's, I'll entertain a motion to close the discussion for Article 12, to close the public hearing for Article 12.
Can you, Shea, so make that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, Mr. Shea made the motion, Ellen Sedillo second. Further discussion? Seeing none. Those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, so that was unanimous. So, let's do Article 13. Article 13 submitted by the Carver Redevelopment Authority. Rezone from Highway Commercial, which is HC, to Green Business Park, which is GBP, G-P-BP, yeah, I guess I said it right, district. See if the town will vote to amend the Carver zoning bylaw and zoning map by rezoning from Highway Commercial, HC, to Green Business Park, GBP. A parcel of land located off Park and Montello Street consisting of approximately 7.48 acres and identified on the census maps as Map 20 Lot 14. And then in brackets is Coon, zero cop, pawn. A copy of said map having been filed with the town clerk or take any other action relative thereto.
By explanation, this was a parcel of land that was not made as part of, not zoned as part of the Green Business Park when it was zoned 10 or more years ago. And the owner, the property, I mean, Route 44 Development purchased that parcel from Coon, who was the owner, in the fall, I believe. And now, he just wants to change the zoning from Highway Commercial, which is what it was, to the Green Business Park. And I don't believe it's considered spot zoning because it's now conforming to the zoning that is all around it. So, it's just another piece of the puzzle.
So, this map of that is included in the planning board's packet?
It's behind you, please.
Oh, and it's up behind me. So, if you look at it, you can see, well, I'm just going to go on the upper-left-hand corner of the Green Business Park. It says Map 20 Lot 14, and that's purple, I believe. So, that is, that shows that it's connected to the Green Business Park. So, they just want to change that. It's not spot zoning because it's right next to, right next to the park.
Yeah.
Any discussion?
Chairman, it looks to me like, I mean, if I'm understanding what they got going on there, it looks to me like the acreage is predominantly wetlands.
I don't know what's up there. I don't...
It's seven acres anyway.
What benefit would it be?
Right, what, if it's all, if it's all wetlands?
The owner, the current owner of the property, the, I believe, the owner, the person who owned it approached him about selling it.
I, I understand. I would think... If it's all wetlands, then again, what?
We don't know that.
I mean, I haven't wandered quite that far.
I'm looking at, I'm looking at the drawing, and it looks, from the drawing, it looks like it's predominantly wetlands. If we could get clarification on that?
Does it matter? I mean, it was still, if it was...
But again, what, what, what point is it? What point would it be? If it's all wetlands, then what's the point of adding it to it?
It's just combined all the parts. It's combined, well, then it makes, then it doesn't make any difference to put it in the same zoning as it all is.
I would think that just by that being a different, in a different zone than the park, it probably wouldn't be as worth as much. If he's going to sell it to the people that own the property now, it would be a benefit to that owner to, to have it zoned the same as the park. Whether it's wetlands or not, that, that doesn't really make any difference because later on, if they do decide to do development in there, that will all have to be looked at carefully to see where the wetlands are or not. But apparently, this person wants to, to sell it to the developers.
I believe, they bought it.
Oh, they bought it, okay. Oh, they already bought it, yeah.
I believe it's just kind of a housekeeping cleanup, make it all match kind of thing. I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't, you know, it's probably a little more restrictive in the Green Business Park than it is this Highway Commercial. But it has no access, so it's not really Highway Commercial.
Right, it's just a landmark piece of land.
It was an oversight.
It's a landmark piece of land that...
It should have been changed, it was just an oversight.
And if it's owned Green Business Park, then it could be added to the existing lot to become one slightly bigger lot and not be sold as two separate lots.
Okay. Any other questions? Any questions from anyone in the audience? Okay, seeing none. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing for Article 13.
Can you, Shea, so makes that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, Mr. Shea made the motion, and Ellen Sedillo second. Further discussion? Seeing none, those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. It's unanimous. Okay, Article 14. All right, Article 14 submitted by the Carver Redevelopment Authority. Amend Section 3580 exemptions from the large-scale ground-mounted solar voltaic installations. And to see if the town will vote to amend Section 3580, large-scale ground-mounted solar voltaic installations of the Carver zoning bylaw, Section 3580-10, proposed by deleting exemptions from the third paragraph of Section 3580-10 as shown and by replacing the language with a new Section 3580-15 exemptions with additions shown in bold and deletions in strike-through or take any other action related thereto. So, 3580 states large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations. 3580 dot 10 is the purpose. The purpose of this bylaw is to promote the creation of new large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations defined as those with a minimum nameplate capacity of 250 kilowatts or greater or covering one acre or more of land by providing standards for the placement, design, construction, operation, monitoring, modification, and removal, removal of such installations that addresses public safety, minimize impacts on scenic, natural, and historic resources, and provide an adequate financial assurance for the eventual decommissioning of such installations. The provisions set forth in this section still apply to the construction, operation, and/or repair of large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations proposed to be constructed or materially altered after the effective date of this section to the extent that any particular provision of this bylaw is determined to be invalid. Such invalidation shall not affect the validity of any other provisions. And then struck out here, this is struck out, small-scale ground or building-mounted solar electric installations which are an accessory structure to an existing residential or non-residential use do not need to comply with this section but must comply with other provisions of Carver zoning bylaw as applicable. And that's struck out. And then in bold here, so this is added, 3580 dot 15 exemptions notwithstanding any other zoning bylaw provisions. To the contrary, the following types of solar uses and structures are exempt from the provisions of Section 3580 and are considered as allowed uses and structures by right and customarily accessory and incidental to permit, to permitted principal uses. A, roof moms and solar electric installations on a new non-residential building within the GBP district, provided however that such uses and structures above shall comply with the other provisions of the Carver zoning bylaws as applicable and with health and safety requirements of the building inspector and fire chief and/or his or her designee. So, any further explanation?
Nope, pretty clear. This will allow solar panels on rooftop of non-residential buildings in the GBP.
Can you tell me why they shouldn't be going through the providing standards for the placement, design, construction, operation, monitoring, modification, removal of such installations that address public safety, minimize impact on scenic, natural, and historic resources, and provide adequate financial assurance for the eventual decommissioning of such installations? Because that's, that's pretty much what you're asking by exempting it. And why this particular proposal is so different from all the other solar voltaic large, even though it's not ground-mounted, it's on the roof, how, why should it be exempt from the design standards that we apply to all of the large-scale solar voltaic? I mean, if you wanted to change large-scale ground-mounted slash roof-mounted solar photic, right? I understand it's a very big building and it's going to be more than an acre, so it's going to fall into the large-scale solar photovoltaic installations, but I'm just, I'm wondering why they're so special that we shouldn't have to worry about the design, construction, eventual decommissioning, and various other aspects of it.
Just for the record, could you state your name again, please?
Sure, yes, John Smolak. Attorney for the Hill. No, good question. And what's driving this provision is because of the meet-up review process that was undertaken before we got involved. The required mitigation is that there be a certain percentage of solar on the roof of these buildings. And again, that's because it's a state policy to try to become more green in terms of renewable energy. And so, the result was that we couldn't comply with the bylaw, which I feel was really related to large-scale ground-mounted solar as opposed to roof-mounted. And so, there's a, in my, in our opinion, there's a, there's a huge difference between the two. Because with the ground-mounted, it's covering a much larger expanse of land as opposed to the roof-mounted, which is simply right on top of the roof. People know exactly what's going to be going there, and there are all incentives in the world to make sure that it works as cited on, on top of a roof. So, you're right, it would exceed a threshold, but, but the way that the solar bylaw is written, it was like sort of in nomads' land as to how, how this provision would apply because this isn't ground-mounted, this is building-mounted.
Right, so what specific aspects? I mean, just by changing large-scale ground-mounted slash roof-mounted solar voltaic would, would include you in this without exempting you from all the other issues that the planning board is supposed to be overseeing for the safety and future of the town?
Well, there was certainly state building code requirements as to roof-mounted solar, and it would be highly, highly, highly unusual for a town to regulate roof-mounted in the same way as ground-mounted solar because they are so different.
Well, in the large scale, it wouldn't be so different. In the small residential scale, it would be different. In the large scale, we're still looking out for, you know, the placement, design, construction, and to make sure that at the end of its period of usefulness, that there's money enough to cover the financial assurances for the eventual decommissioning and to make sure it's appropriate, that it actually minimizes impacts on scenic, natural, and historic resources, amongst other things.
Well, that's because a ground-mounted solar facility is a merchant facility. It's something that people build to make money off of. That's not the case with a building-mounted solar facility. This is, this is designed to complement the existing building design. And, and a lender is going to make sure that all the assurances with respect to a roof-mounted facility are going to be maintained. So, in my eye, there's a huge, huge difference between roof-mounted versus ground-mounted because, again, the roof-mounted is not a merchant facility. This is, as opposed to a ground-mounted, so.
Okay, so, as I understand it, then why would it be considered as a by right and not to a special permit, go through the proper process?
I'm not sure what the proper process is because the ground-mounted...
Well, it would go through site review through the planning board, through a special, it would go through site review through the planning board and the various other agencies in regards to this.
Well, in terms of health and safety issues, we are going to need probably about five or six different special permits before the planning board. And I'm sure the planning board is savvy enough to cover this particular issue and review the solar issue as part of the review process. Because you have site plan review, you have other special permits that are required as well for this facility.
Yeah, but you're asking for it by right as opposed through a proper review and process where the public has a chance to put input in regards to the process.
Well, we're asking for by right, but it's also by special permit because you're looking at the entire project because we have site plan review.
We can turn down a special permit if it doesn't meet the standards we, we feel are necessary.
And so, so we can't by right. So, in my, even though it's a by right use, you still have to comply with health and safety requirements, which would otherwise be required anyway under your site plan review regs.
Well, what if we find at, at a later point, that when you put them up, that at certain points of the day, that they're shining down Route 44 and creating a hazard?
Then you condition it.
We can't condition by right. It's a by right.
Absolutely, you can.
Then, then it should be done under a special permit. I, I just feel that the exemptions requested in this, especially considering some of the proposed bylaws coming up, is extensive.
You would have to rewrite the entire solar bylaw to accommodate roof-mounted effect. So, we thought that this was a way that would simplify the process, number one, but it's always, it's going to be reviewed anyway as part of the planning board's site plan and process. So, so whether you have four special permits, five special permits, six special permits, does it really matter? Because it is going to be reviewed as part of the special permit standards that you have in your filings.
And this also only applies to new non-residential buildings in the Green Business Park. So, only new, non-residential. And underneath where it says provided by, that gives you all the... And underneath where it says provided by, that gives you all the protections and all the review by police, fire, border health, safety, that wants to intervene on that. So I think that provides the protections that you're looking for, Mr. Shea. And it, again, only applies to a new, non-residential building in the Green Business Park.
Did you have some additional to say, John?
Yes. So it looks to me like by wording business, by right, and everything else, you're trying to do an end around from, on the permitting process, and not just our board but others, other boards in general. And to that, a simple change of title from large-scale ground-mounted solar to large-scale solar photovoltaic would essentially include everything without any exemptions. That keeps us, it allows, it allows the building use, and it would also not require any exemptions for the green, for the green zone.
But I think the wording below it still gives you all the review that is required.
No, it doesn't.
How so?
Because it's a by right.
I understand, I understand it's by right for a new, non-residential building only in the Green Business Park, but adding it up to the top line in the definitions...
So if we disagree...
You're going to spread it out to the whole town.
But that's just that if we disagree with it, then they can do it if they want to.
But not if it doesn't meet police, fire, border health, safety, and everything else.
If it's by right, they can do what they want, apparently.
But not with the provisions, the provisions...
So the by right, so the by right of the property does, they can put in whatever they want to, but with the solar, with the solar, they have to, they have to meet all these other things, whether or not we agree.
Well, they do. It has to be on the roof because of the MEPA determination.
Which I'm fine with roof-mounted solar, I just feel that the by right is asking a lot, especially if we don't feel it meets the, if the planning board doesn't feel it meets the safety and health and protection of the individuals. I mean, isn't that why the planning board is here?
Well, I just want to say that something like this is different from a ground-mounted solar project to me. It's different. It's different because you have to meet, you know, setback requirements, there's drainage to look at, there's grading that needs to be done on anything ground-mounted. So there's a, there's a variety that Fessen O'Neill looks at.
3580 does not say that, doesn't go into any of those details.
Well, what I'm saying is, this is attached to a building.
That goes into detail later on.
I would think that this would be under the special permit for the whole project and the building and everything that, that we look at. I don't think we need, I don't think that it's needed that you have to, to do a, another special permit for rooftop installation.
Right, it should all be covered under the site permit.
Right, right.
The site plan review.
Mr. Chairman, through you.
Yes.
Just one thing that Mr. Laura for Hillwood mentioned, and it's in the informational summary. This proposed change addresses the need to provide rooftop solar and at a level as mandated by the MEPA Section 61 finding for this project. So it's a state mandate that this amount of solar has to be there.
And I don't think that anybody here would disagree with putting the roof to such a use as solar, but I think it should still undergo review. Yeah? That's all?
Well, I think...
I'm actually in favor. I don't see why a roof couldn't be used in that manner. I think it's much better than putting it on the logs, but, because the roof is already going to be there, but I do believe that it should have some level of scrutiny.
Well, I think a lot of that has to do with the building inspector and everything else, too. I mean, there's a lot of levels of scrutiny in building design and everything else that goes into this. I don't know, I mean, the planning board is, would be looking at where the building would be placed to make sure that it's, it meets the setback requirements and if there's any grading and drainage and everything, but whereas the rooftop solar, I mean, that really doesn't have anything to do with the, the planning board as far as, as a, as a ground-mounted or by one.
Well, I would think the issue with it being up so high in the air would be that it would be roughly about the height of the highway or so, and it's going to be pointed probably southwest, which would be right at Route 44, and again, should, should be scrutinized at least at that level.
I, I don't know. I don't know how much, I mean, I know that there's a lot of solar on houses today. I've never seen any, any panels on houses ever, ever glare, show any glare. I know that glare was a, a big, a lot of discussion on the first solar field that came into CAVA by right, and, but there was, that, that was not, it never proved to be true. There was no glare, and I haven't seen any glare from any kind of solar panels in any town around. So...
Again, I still think that the provisions by police and safety would certainly, if that was an issue, they would certainly be looking at that.
Which is all part of our planning board process.
I mean, there's a lot of things as of right that I don't have to check with police and I don't have to check with fire to do. Here it's specifically saying providing, no, it's kind of as right, but if you get the agreements by all these other places. I mean, our other, you know, our other by right things don't generally say that.
Well, the planning board makes sure that gets done, that's part of our job, that the...
I understand.
The police and the fire, the, the health department, and every conservation, and everybody else involved.
Well, here it says they have to.
So does the planning board, and it would be thus required under the laws.
Exactly.
And, and you're asking this to be exempt?
No, because below it says providing that.
Okay, so providing that, that other provisions of the CAVA zoning bylaws are applicable.
And with health and safety requirements of the building inspector, fire chief, and is our designee. I mean, if you want to add somebody else on there?
No, what I'm saying is that you are asking for an exemption from the provisions of Section 3580, and 3580 asks the planning board to review the standards for placement, design, construction, operation, monitoring, modification, removal, address public safety, minimize impacts, and provide adequate financial assurance for the eventual decommissioning of such installation. That's, that's part of what we do.
And it's ground-mounted.
I want to take each round.
I would argue that it's for all large solar.
I would argue that it says ground-mounted.
Well, I would argue that the building is attached to the ground and therefore the solar panels are theoretically on top of the ground.
I'm going to have to hand you that one.
So, I don't know.
I just, so that was all the questions I had.
I mean, do we, would we know how tall these structures would be? Because we don't really even know what the, the building is going to look like.
It's included in the maximum height of the building.
Oh, it's included in the maximum height of the building. Is this going to be shielded or what? Do we know? Is it, is like the sides of front of the building, is something come up from the roofline and where this, or are we thinking way too far ahead?
We're thinking way too far ahead. The planning board will be the first people that see that.
In other, if you look, if you look behind you on the screen, there is a cross-section of the building, and it indicates the solar panels on the roof.
Okay, so it's just the minimal height?
Yes.
And what, yeah. So it's just, just barely above the roofline?
Yes, and there is most likely going to be a parapet around the perimeter of the building to hide not only the solar but the mechanical HVAC boxes that go on the top as well.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, we have a blown-up representation of it.
Oh, something, something I can see.
This one, yeah?
Yes. Okay.
Ah, not just peeking at it.
So you're saying that, I mean, this is all far ahead in the future, but in some areas, there are mechanical units that are about eight foot above the roof. We don't know exactly.
That's what this is, eight feet?
But that's pretty much on all buildings, things like that, so. And it's such a big building that eight foot...
That small thing like that would have to be noticeable.
Two feet?
Yeah.
I don't know, anything else? I don't know, we could think about this for tomorrow night, but...
Protrusive, like this is going to be like that.
I have to take a look at this, whether, under site plan review, I mean, we have, it would be building placement and things like that. The solar array in this particular instance is almost just, it's just slightly above the roof, it's just like a part of the roof. I don't know how other towns handle this, I don't, if we could, I don't know if there's a, that question could be asked for tomorrow night's meeting. I mean, there are other towns that, that do have solar arrays on top of the roof. I mean, I just, I don't, I don't think that there'd be really a whole bunch for the, for the planning board to review on something like this.
Probably not, but it is probably going to be over a million and a half square feet of solar panels.
All right, well, we can further investigate this, I guess.
I believe that the MEPA requirements are that 33% of the roof has to be...
Six hundred thousand minimum.
At minimum, yes.
All right, any questions by anybody out in the audience?
Mr. Chairman, John's back.
Oh, oh, yes, please.
Sorry, I just wanted to add one item in terms of this bylaw. Is it not true that the board is also considering a moratorium, large-scale solar, as part of the work?
I believe it's on, right?
Yes, yes.
Should the event of fact does pass, that would prohibit any solar on this rooftop for the duration of the moratorium.
The moratoriums that are being, that are being sought are eleven and a half months.
Right, so what's the chance you're going to have the building up within eleven and a half months if this possibly passes, which is, there's no guarantee on that?
I, well, frankly, I just don't understand where you have a number of health and safety standards that are built into this exemption that still need to be complied with, and that, you know, this couldn't be reviewed through the normal planning board, site plan review and approval process, because it does do, it does include standards. And so in fact, if there was a significant health or safety issue, I'm sure that the planning board would have the discussion with the fire chief or other public safety official who would weigh in on that, and that would be as a condition to make sure that that issue doesn't become a problem.
So then it becomes conditional and rather than by right, which is honestly...
Well, it's conditional now as it reads.
Not really.
I mean, it's a, it's a use that's by right, but on the other hand, too, you still have standards that you must comply with.
Well, our standards are not the same as the building stand, building inspector and fire chief, and we do, at some point, eventually require adequate financial assurance for the eventual decommissioning of such installation.
Well, I don't think that, that doesn't pertain to a building, because it's the, it's a, it's on a building, it's on a rooftop. The reason, the reason a solar field, we have those on solar fields is because the land is, is, for 20 years. So the cranberry bog owner, say for an example, leases the, you know, gets payment in a lease through, to have the solar field there. After 20 years, that solar field can disappear, and, and so does the lease on the property. So it's a different thing. I mean, hopefully, if something like this comes above, I mean, that building will be there for many more years than 20 years.
Mr. Chairman, that's what I was trying to mention before, that large-scale ground-mounted solar arrays are really merchant, they're, they're specifically designed to sell electricity as, and that's why you have the financial assurances if something happens and goes away. You have a building here, and, and so the owners could be responsible for retaining it. The idea is for that, the, the solar to provide the energy for that particular building.
Yes.
All right, any other questions? Anybody in the audience, yes?
Donna Borian, 278 South Better Village. Do we have any conflicts of interest with anybody that's presenting tomorrow night and spouses sitting on any of these committees?
Could you be more specific?
On the moratorium by law?
Yeah.
No, well, no.
Can you be more specific?
None of my people.
No, no, we're not, we're not proud of it.
Oh, I'm planning, I don't know.
Could you repeat that again, more specific?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't want to call anybody out, but do someone's wife on the planning board is presenting tomorrow night?
That's my wife.
And is she, so what is she presenting on? I mean, is it a con, I'm just asking.
She's, she's presenting on one of the moratoriums.
Is it on the solar?
Solar and...
So do we have a conflict of interest if you guys take a vote tonight? That's my question.
We are voting tonight, we'll, we'll probably vote on these tomorrow night, that's the way it seems.
She has to recuse himself, that's a good point.
I, I, I don't think that there's a conflict of interest, but I wouldn't be positively sure about that.
Just, just...
I don't know how that really plays legally.
I'll speak to this just briefly.
He just has to recuse himself, that's for sure.
I'll speak to it briefly in that, with regards to, with regards to the solar on the front of the building or something like that, that has nothing to do with putting a pause on, on installations for eleven and a half months. I mean, we're talking about, we're talking about three years down the road before the building's even completed. But secondly, it's, as far as their, I've already done an ethics review on this, and there's no ethical, based on, based on the state ethics committee, there's not an ethical bylaw.
I don't know that, that, I'm asking questions, I don't know the input.
We, maybe we can check that out.
And I hope for you guys to take a vote, and then you find out later that's wrong.
Right, yeah, no, let's, we can check that out tomorrow and, and see how that goes. As far as the, the solar, the building may be, say if this project didn't happen and it was going to be built in three years, you still have to get the permitting in place.
Correct.
And it may, the permitting may be beginning to get in place while this moratorium is going on. So I think that we need maybe to get in touch with, with the town's lawyers and, and discuss this large-scale ground-mounted solar rooftop thing and how, how that's going to be affected. I, I really don't want to, I don't want to see this get, interfere with this, but, because I don't, I don't think, we're talking about apples and oranges here, it's a different, it's a different thing, you know, this type of solar than the ground-mounted, yes?
Would, Mr. Shea, would you feel more comfortable if they added the language per site plan review by the planning board?
Right, that would be fine, but I have a lot of issues with by right, but yes, I would be far more comfortable.
In addition, just to this one new, non-residential building in the Green Business Park?
Well, in accordance with site plan review.
In accordance with site plan review? Mr. Bach, would that be possible?
So can I add that language in?
Um, in accordance to site plan review by the planning board.
After or his designee, you're adding that?
After or his designee, you're adding that?
No. After, well, wherever it fits down there.
Mr. Shea, where do you think it should be appropriate?
Section 3580 and are considering allowed uses through site plan review by the planning board. This is on the same favorite, but I think.
So if I made this for clarification, where do you want to plug that in court with site plan review by the planning board?
Roughly after exempt from the provisions of section 3580 and are allowed.
In other words, cross out by right.
And then add your language through site plan review.
Right.
Right? Thank you. Mr. Bott, you got it?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. All right.
Now, would you be willing to talk on this one today?
I think, I mean, we could, but I think since we have a voter on most of these, I think if we just went through them and just checked them off, we'll just do it. I think we have, you know, we have some questions here and there, just to clarify that. I mean, we had to keep track. Had to keep track of all the solar, yeah. Okay, so, any further discussion by anybody out in the audience? So let's, seeing no one coming forward, let's entertain a motion to close the public hearing on Article 14.
Can you initiate somebody's motion?
So we have a motion by Mr. Shea, second by Mr. Gadskey. Further discussion, seeing none. Those in favor, please say aye. Aye, because it's unanimous. All right, Article 15. Article 15 submitted by the Cava Redevelopment Authority. Amend section 3166 and 3347 site plan review performance and parking lot lighting standards to see if the town will vote to amend site plan review performance standards for lighting and parking lots under sections 3166 and 3347 as shown below with additions shown in bold and deletions and strike through or take any other action related thereto. So, 3166, minimize lighting intrusion through use of such devices as cutoff luminaries confining direct rays to the site with fixture mounting not higher than 11 feet in pedestrian areas and 15 feet in parking lots. And then in bold, except as otherwise provided under section 3347. So that was a change, except as otherwise provided under section 3347. And then we go to 3347, all artificial lighting shall be not more than 20 feet in height in pedestrian areas and 20 feet in parking lots, except, and this is in bold, so this is a change, except that site lighting and the green business park zone may be no more than 40 feet in height. So that is an addition, and shall be arranged and shielded as to prevent direct glare from light source onto any public way or any other property except that driveways where illumination, and this is in bold, except that driveways where illumination is desirable for public safety purposes, and that's the end of the bold. All parking facilities which are used at night shall be lighted as evenly and fully as possible. The planning board shall require the applicant to provide the type and wattage of all proposed lighting for parking areas. So, okay, so we usually have, under site plan review, we do have a lighting plan that shows that the light is contained on the site, so I imagine that this is going to be the same way.
With the 40-foot height in the parking lot, it's to allow for fewer lights, fewer light poles angled down because that's just safer for trucks with fewer light poles. And that's the increase, and it's only for the Green Business Park.
And you expect to run it how far up the driveway or the road up to Montalo Street?
Right.
It says except that driveways, so you put in an exception for public safety purposes, so I'm curious, according to the map, what kind would they do?
Again, that's site plan review and plan approval.
The bylaw would be for the Green Business Parks District.
So specifically in the, in the Green Business Park?
Yes.
Yeah, probably the road that leads from Montalo Street is where the driveway is supposed to go.
Do we have any idea what the lighting pollution?
I think that would all come under site plan review, you would have authority over that.
Yeah, we generally have a lighting plan that shows where the lighting falls on the property from these lights, so we've always required that, so it would probably go under the same review, I would think.
Mr. Shea, I believe in section 3166, there are already, there's already something in place about light intrusion, lighting intrusion.
Right, but I didn't know if MEPA had addressed this at all in regards to the site because I know they have lighting requirements and standards to be met, and.
I don't know if their lighting requirements are height-related, I think they're just lighting-related, lumens.
And at what point can this be limited so that they're not every 30 feet or 50 feet, you know?
Again, I assume that's some kind of formatting the planning board uses during a full-on site plan review.
And now, just a couple of years ago, we raised it up to the 20-foot height in order to reduce the number of poles. How is this beneficial to anybody other than putting it at that particular height? I mean.
I guess that it's simply a bigger space than our usual parking lots that we have. And the idea is to, the idea is to have fewer poles, light standards.
Included on the buildings, or is this specific to poles?
It says poles.
Says poles.
It says poles.
Yeah, I would think by having the higher poles that you would have, you would have less poles, and you could spread out the light more in a larger area, so that would give you less poles.
Where does it say poles?
Well, actually, it may be over 20 feet in height. I guess that's just.
I guess it's just assumed that the light is on the top of something that makes it go up 20 feet.
We limit the height of buildings to 20 feet, too, in certain areas, and generally it's 15 feet unless there's a specific need for a 20-foot lighting, but that's not just poles, it's buildings and everything else.
Again, this is just for the Green Business Park.
Right, and how many, how many livery bays are there, proposed? 576?
We're not there yet.
There's a proposed draft up there that shows somewhere around.
There's a solid draft, but it's not ready for site plan review. That's you guys.
See, this would all be done under site plan review when they, when they firm this up, decide, you know, where the driveways are going to go, where the buildings are going to go, height of building. I mean, I suppose onto something like this, this could also be placed on a building, too.
Right, which is, you know, I expect they're going to want each of the bays lit.
Yeah, right.
There's 500 bays. We're talking about.
Well, there'd be different types of lights. I mean, maybe under conditions, if those bays aren't being used in the evening, then the lights wouldn't be needed. I guess that would be under site plan review.
I see, maybe that would give us the ability to limit it, too.
Yeah, yeah, under site plan review, yeah, we, the lighting is an important thing that we review.
And what's the exception? Why is, they shall be arranged and shielded so as to prevent direct glare from the light source onto any public way or any other property except that driveways where illumination is desirable for public safety purposes? I mean, it should still be kept on the property?
Yes, yeah, I mean, there always is.
So I'm just asking why there's an exception?
I think what they're saying is, is that.
I think that's for the public ways because it says it can't be arranged, no direct glare from the light source onto any public way or other property except the driveway.
Well, the driveway shouldn't be a public way, is it a public way? And if so, then.
Onto, I suppose, or some.
If it is a public way, they wouldn't have the right to be putting up lights, that would be the town's responsibility.
It's not a public way.
These would be the driveways, maybe like driveways on the side of the building or the rear of the buildings, that's probably what that would be, or leading to the, to parking areas or, yeah. But again, this would all be scrutinized by the planning board under site plan review. I think it's just, it's, you know, this is just to allow the higher height so there'd be less poles, that's, you know. And that's not saying that it has to be 40 feet high, I mean, we could say, well, 20 feet is, you know, we've allowed 240, maybe 30 feet, you know, and it all depends upon what we determine at site plan review. This maximum height. All right, any further questions? Anybody in the audience have any questions? All right, seeing none. Okay, so let's take, so entertain a motion to, to close the public hearing for Article 15.
Can you initiate somebody's motion?
I'll second that.
So we have a motion by Mr. Shea, second by Ellen Sidillo, further discussion, seeing none. Those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, so that was unanimous. All right, so 16.
Mr. Chairman, before you read 16, I just want to explain the slide because there are other signed amendments that you'll be discussing tomorrow.
Sure.
For ease of discussion, as I prepare the slide, there are 16/19. 19 is what you'll be discussing tomorrow. Tom, I included the slides you would send to me. I don't know if you want to discuss that tonight or if you just want to kick off 19 till tomorrow, but 16 is very succinct in adding Green Business Park to the signed bylaws and replacing highway, or not replacing, but adding it to highway commercial.
So, okay, okay, let's go on to 16, we'll see, 19 was the sign amendment?
Right.
So, and this is related to the Green Business Park?
19 is not related to the Green Business Park, 16 is, and as I said, just as a matter of, if we wanted to discuss the signs in one fell swoop, that's how I prepared the slide.
Oh, okay.
We need not. I recognize the time and I suggest we doubt.
All right, go ahead, whatever, did you want to do some more or?
No, that's the extent of my explanation for the slide.
All right. So Article 16. It's Article 16 submitted by the Cava Redevelopment Authority. Amend section 3521 permitted signs for Green Business Park District to see if the town will vote to amend the Cava zoning bylaw, section 3521, which is permitted signs by replacing the term highway commercial industrial districts above the applicable sign regulations for such districts with the term highway commercial industrial slash Green Business Park districts such that said sign regulations will comply with the Green Business Park District. All right, any, any questions, any discussion? So it looks like you're proposing to add the Green Business Park with the highway commercial and industrial.
Yeah, correct. Right now, it's silent on the Green Business Park.
Okay, so that's, that's pretty simple. Any, any questions?
It's a simple one.
Okay, seeing, seeing no questions, anybody in the audience have any questions? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing for Article 16.
Can you initiate somebody's motion?
So we have a motion by Mr. Shea, second by Mr. Gadskey, further discussion, seeing none. Those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Okay, so opposed, go, okay, so that's unanimous. Article 17. An article submitted by the Cava Redevelopment Authority to see if the town will vote to amend the Cava zoning bylaw, section 2230.C, use regulation schedule, industrial under the use category privately-owned wastewater treatment facilities under note 5 with additions shown in bold and deletions and strike through or take any other action related thereto. So it says 5 does not include packaged treatment plants as accessory uses to subdivision, commercial, or industrial development and in bold which are permitted by right as an accessory use in structure. So, so does not include the packaged treatment plants as accessory uses to subdivision, commercial, or industrial development in bold which are permitted by right as an accessory use in structure. Okay, any discussion?
I'd like to know why this, this was added in there as a by right?
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Right now, the bylaws allow a wastewater treatment facility as a primary structure. They do not allow one as an accessory structure to a building of this size that will need one.
So which are permitted as an accessory use in structure?
Yes, because right now.
Which would be fine, I certainly think that as not knowing what's going in there, and this property having been heavily contaminated multiple times over many years, I think it would behoove that this time to go through all the proper channels and, and full review of this, and should, should we feel that the particular type or style or use, because what if a biotech goes in there, what if a chemical storage facility or warehouse goes in there, I mean, those are, these are all things, and this is, this is open to the whole town, so there are certain standards, water quality standards, which, which have to be met, reviewed, and planned for, and I think just removing the word by right would go a long way to giving it that appropriate, because by right is, again, when it comes to the water and the aqua.
So, all I could say, we have somebody that's just moved up to the podium, but as we've done with the, we just had the park in South Cava, and they had a, a structure like this, and most of the, this had to be permitted by the state, and it's actually overseen by the state, so.
Yeah, we liked it, we agreed, it was a good design, but we did still put conditions on it.
If you would like to speak.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. You're correct, the purpose of the additional language is to correct an ambiguity because, apparently, you know, maybe because of the history of the site in the past, you know, you decided to include a requirement respecting privately-owned ways to our treatment facilities that were not an accessory use as sort of, you know, primary use in the past, and maybe because of what happened, you know, as a part of the site in the past, that's the reason why you regulated it as such. the reason why you regulated it as such. But this is, this is definitely a different animal. The ground, any design flow that's in excess of 10,000 gallons per day requires a state groundwater discharge permit that is reviewed by the DEP after an extensive review process, typically in conjunction with a board of health. And so the notion here was simply to clarify that ambiguity because you could read it as if that use was not allowed as an accessory use. And so that's the reason why the additional language is provided because there is an ambiguity there. Because it could, could be read to state that these groundwater, these on-site groundwater discharge permits, when they're related to a project, are not allowed. So that's why the additional language, that to clarify.
So you just want to be assured that if this building is built, you'd also be allowed to put in a wastewater treatment plant?
Right, right, like the same with any other facility that has a design flow of 10,000 gallons per day.
And this would only be for the Green Business Park also, right? Yeah. So I don't think there's anything unusual about this. And it is, it is overseen by several agencies, but as we did with the park in South Carver, we conditioned that they send the planning board, I think Mr. Shea...
Discharge permit.
Yeah, had some, yeah, put some conditions on there, added so that the planning board gets some information on how the system was working. But generally, that, the planning board doesn't really have any, any oversee on something like that. It's a board of health and...
Yeah, actually, it's applicable to just like the Green Business Park or it's applicable to any project out there that requires a design flow of 10,000 gallons per day or greater. And that review process at the DEP typically takes a year, so it's very rigorous. And certainly, as part of that process, they go through a very rigorous SOAS analysis as well. So, so again, that's really typically in the purview of state DEP, not typically within the purview of the planning board. So, you know, you could condition any approval upon a DEP issuance of a state DEP per groundwater discharge permit.
Well, I think striking the words by right would cover just about that. It's unnecessary and it looks to skirt the appropriate processes in regards to the intention of the bylaw. We sit on the largest aquifer in Massachusetts. We supply water and we've had a lot of issues with contamination and specifically from the property that we are discussing, the Green Business Park property, and it bears full review and full scrutiny.
So you could strike the word by right as an accessory because it has to remain as an accessory use because...
That is the by right.
It's subject to the issuance of the DEP.
Take the by right out, I don't want that.
It's just the by right that I have concerns with.
Because the goal is to make it, have the ability to make it an accessory use unless we want like a full-blown wastewater treatment plant there as the primary use, but I don't think so.
Doesn't the, yeah, I mean, doesn't the state determine that or... I'm not sure. All I know is, is at the park, at Jellystone Park in South Carver, the Board of Health, the Carver Board of Health worked closely with the, with the state and DEP on that project, so, you know, the town was involved in that, you know, also. Generally not a planning board, a planning board thing. But I understand what you're saying with this, so if we could just strike the by right...
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Through you. I'm wondering if there's another way to do this. By striking the words by right, it now reads that, that does not include packaged treatment plants as accessory uses, commercial or industrial development, which are permitted as an accessory use or structure. Permitted signifies that it can be denied. So I would suggest that you leave in by right and then caveat that by saying upon approval of the DEP wastewater.
I disagree because I, I feel that the town has the right to make far more stringent laws and recommendations. There's, and we all know, the dump in North Carver wasn't appropriately vetted. And what's that done? That's done nothing but contaminate the whole area. I mean, this needs to be properly vetted and it should be going through the appropriate public hearing process as any other, especially with something as large and complex as a wastewater treatment plant.
But it is. It is. It is looked at by the DEP and the...
Right. The DEP may approve it, but their standards aren't necessarily what our standards are. And that's, and that involves a public hearing process.
I don't think we have standards for this.
I don't think you have any by laws on that.
No.
It's a wastewater treatment facility. It is allowed on the property as it is in our zoning bylaws. A wastewater treatment facility is allowed in the usage chart under a special permit, not by right. So I don't believe that those words are appropriate and they conflict with the usage chart. I believe they conflict with it. I've only glanced at it earlier, but I can check it now.
No, try here, I got it. It says special permit, but that's when it's the principal use.
Yes, Mr. Bott.
So we can certainly ask our health agent about this, but for the most part, a wastewater treatment plant is wholly within the realm of DEP in that permitting. And what our health agent will likely say is that's what it is. Now, in looking at the chart for privately owned wastewater treatment plants, this is the footnote 5. And footnote 5 says does not include packaged treatment plants as accessory uses to subdivision, commercial, or industrial development. So it seems to me that we're sort of having a moot discussion here about this permitted use doesn't include a packaged treatment plant for the industrial use and they're regulated by DEP. So I don't know that we've gone really much at all that...
The words by right, they, they go up my wastewater treatment plant sideways. I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, this is... Sorry to hear that. I was trying to be witty, but I'm like, I don't know, I was thinking to be witty and not say something. But the point is, is that it's interesting in the bylaw that it actually has, it says a use because you really don't have a use for a wastewater treatment plant without stuff to put in it. So I don't, I don't know there are too many commercial applications for a wastewater treatment plant without pipes to come to it to bring stuff from the subdivision. So it's sort of an anomaly that's in your bylaw anyhow, but the fact that the size of the development of wastewater treatment plant, over this 10,000 gallons, is the purview of mass DEP and not the local rate of health board. And the fact that the bylaw currently says, it doesn't include packaged treatment plants as a commercial use, accessory to commercial use. And I think that's specifically what we're talking about here, that this wastewater treatment plant would be for treating these commercial uses, industrial uses of this kind. So I think it's, we're having a lot of discussion, I was not going to say it doesn't matter on this particular one.
Why is it pointed out?
Much better, can I tell you, speak to all interested in the chat?
It's pointed out as an industrial primary use and it, as a primary use, it does not. So what I see is that you want to clarify that this is permitted as an accessory use in structure and I am fine with that. What I have the problem with is by right because it should undergo the full review and scrutiny of all the town and local officials in regards to it.
I don't know what to say. It's, it's done, it's not done by the town, it's done by the state and DEP.
We still review them until it was the board of health.
I mean, Tom can, can speak with the board of health agent tomorrow and see how he feels about it and, but I can understand that the problem is, is this is just going to go on the Green Business Park, it's going to be a one-shot deal for the Green Business Park. The people that are developing the Green Business Park want to know that if they're building, that they can, that they can, that they can put this in. And I mean, if they, if they couldn't, then it wouldn't work. They couldn't put the building there, they'd have to do something else.
Which are permitted as accessory use in structure and that, that would cover everything.
But I still think if there were any concerns by the planning board also, that we could do another site, site plan review and put some conditions in on the plan.
And I could also say, subject to review of the DEP permits and review by the Carver Board of Health of the DEP permits.
I think we did something like that with the...
If I might say, this isn't specific to the Green Business Park, it is for the entire town of Carver.
No, it's footnote 5, which only applies to wastewater treatment plants on the...
It doesn't say Green Business Park.
That says a primarily, primary usage. Oh, well, so...
And then footnote 5 goes down to not, to not include packaged treatment plants.
But you're allowing privately owned wastewater treatment facilities by right and that's, that's just anywhere in Carver that they could do it and apply for a special permit. And that's problematic.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I have a question for Mr. Bott.
Yes.
Can the, does the planning board have the authority to supersede the DEP permission?
No, no, it's a board of health issue, it's a DEP issue.
Planning board, planning board has a right to have more stringent laws than what the, than what the state sets up. That's our purview. This is our area. We're entitled, we're entitled to have stricter laws than what the rest of the state has.
Not for septic though. Not for septic.
If we want it, if we want it stricter than what the state, than what the state is saying...
No, I understand what you're saying.
We can make it so.
But...
Every, every law under the state thing will tell you that local law can be stricter, but it cannot be looser.
It, but this would be under the, the board of health. It would, it doesn't come under the planning board.
So this is...
It's a land use, so...
Yeah, it does. Let me ask this, is the wastewater treatment plant supposed to be an accessory use to the buildings?
Yes.
Yes.
So then it has nothing to do with Section 5?
Section 5 says it cannot be an accessory use.
Section 5 says a privately owned wastewater treatment plant or PWFT as the primary, primary use of the land, industrial land, does not include packaged treatment. This is, this is based on the primary use, it's not, it's not secondary.
Does not include packaged treatment plants as accessory uses. This is an accessory use.
Right, which says does not include packaged treatment plants as accessory uses to subdivision, commercial, or industrial. So is this an accessory use to a subdivision, commercial, or industrial project? That's my question. Is this an accessory use to a subdivision, commercial, or industrial development?
Yes.
Yes.
It does not include packaged treatment plants as accessory uses to a subdivision, commercial, or industrial development. So it, it's a moot point and shouldn't even be brought forward.
But then they can't have a wastewater treatment plant.
They can because it does not, this, this chart does not include packaged treatment plants that are an accessory use to an industrial or commercial development. That is not included under privately owned wastewater treatment facility usage chart. So is that correct, Tom?
That's my view.
Yeah.
But we're going to ask people who know poo better than me.
So this has no bearing on the project.
So this article is completely unnecessary.
This article's...
They can, they can put a...
There's nothing to stop them, they are, this, as far as I'm concerned, under C industrial, privately owned wastewater treatment plant, a special permit is not required as an accessory use. It is only required for the primary use of the, of the land.
Yes, okay. I mean, we had these looked at by KP Law and vetted, but if we want to have that clarified in the form of an opinion?
Mm-hmm.
Because I think it's, I think it's ambiguous, so...
Yeah.
I'm just saying that by right is opening a can of worms for the whole town of Carver because wastewater treatment plants can be put in the greater business zones, the industrial zones, IEIBIC and SSID, which I'm not entirely...
That's the Spring Street industrial.
I don't think it needs to be voted on. I think it'd be eliminated as an article.
You think you could, it really doesn't need to be an article?
I'm reading it the same way Mr. Shea does.
I'd like that it's clarified.
Accessory use to a primary structure.
Sure, yeah. If we could have that clarified.
And a site plan review.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, I agree.
All right, so let's move on.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, the last item is, it's eight zoning changes with an asterisk, of course. I included what you see up there as Amendment 18 because there was some confusion about it. The purpose is to eliminate some redundancy in the general bylaw, but to retain the earth removal process in the zoning bylaws. So it's not, we're not going to discuss that this evening. It's on there as an asterisk, just as a clarification.
Okay. Okay, so Article 17, which we just discussed, the use of, allow the privately owned wastewater treatment facilities as an accessory use, we're going to look into that and have a little more information on that at tomorrow night's meeting. Is there anybody in the audience that has anything to say before seeing nobody coming forward? So let's close the public hearing on Article 17.
Can we share going to make a motion to close Article 17? Can we share the public hearing on Article 17? I'll second.
So a motion by Mr. Shea is second by Ellen Sedillo. Any further discussion? Seeing none, those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed? Okay, so it's unanimous. I don't know, do we want to continue on or, what's your suggestion? It's now 10 to 10. Should we just continue the rest of this tomorrow night or do you want me to, should we go on, Tom? What's your suggestion?
Chair's in charge.
I was afraid you were going to say that.
Yes, we can.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
At this point, the IDA will adjourn.
Okay.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, good night. Good night. And so we'll continue. Is there, is there anybody here for the Sula photovoltaic representative to speak about it or... Yeah, is there anybody from the select board or did they leave already? I think they left.
Big four left.
I think everybody left.
Anybody have a quick comment? I hope this is how we treated again the town meeting, you said.
It's going to be 10 times worse, but it won't be us doing it.
We're missing some of our other regular town meeting participants' questions.
Well, you know, fighting out of the way here, our argument.
Unfortunately, it always comes down to the crunch. We, you know, for the IDA, they've had meetings, they have exposes, they've had different open air meetings at the library and different, and, you know, people generally don't participate in that, they just wait to town meetings, and then town meetings last forever. So unfortunately, nobody, nobody wants to do the homework before and get a lot of things straightened out before it goes to town meeting, so that's the way it goes. All right, so, so we can skip to the side...
So we could skip to the sign one.
Yeah, I think, yeah, that's what I was thinking. Could we, could we not do the moratorium on the SOLO photovoltaic? But let's skip to, yeah, table that for tomorrow. But let's go to the zoning bylaw for the signs. And that's, so let's go to Article 19. If you want to take a five-minute recess, go ahead. Okay. Okay, so it's, it's 10 of 10. We'll come back at 5 of 10. All right. So it's, so are we easy yet? It's, yeah, it's 9:55. So let's go to the Article 19 sign bylaws. And this is, the proposed changes to the section 3500 sign replace and planning, replace the planning board as the permitting authority with the building commissioner. The advertised changes also eliminated section 3570, special permit to exceed dimensional and lighting requirements for signs. I understand the planning board expressed their support for this change at their meeting on 11/23/21. Oh, I'm just kidding. This was a letter, I guess. I'm not reading that.
So if I may, Mr. Chairman, you didn't do a lot of reading. I can read this where you feel like.
Okay, yeah, that right. Yes, please.
So Article 19 zoning bylaw, section 3500 sign amendments, "Deceit the town will vote to amend section 3500 signs by replacing the planning board as the permitting authority to the building commissioner. By doing so, the following sections, 3530 standards, 3550 additional regulations for specific types of signs, 3560 administration, 3570 special permit to exceed dimensional and lighting requirements for signs as amended." And so it goes into those specific sections and when... Stephen took the laptop, he took the slides that you have in front of you that aren't on the screen anymore. So I will just go through them. So section 3551 illumination standards says, "The decorative neon, the decorative neon window signs may be permitted where, instead of the planning board, it says, 'The building commissioner determines if such signs are compatible with the building's historical and architectural character and style and color.'" For 3551, under directional signs on public property, it says, "Such signs may be allowed with the permission of," and rather than the planning board, it says, "the building commissioner." Section D of 3551 has been deleted, which said, "The planning board may formulate additional rules," because you guys aren't going to be doing additional, the building commissioner will. So that bylaw takes the planning board out of that. And so these signed applications will go to the building commissioner. That is the essence of those first changes. Under section 3561, under sign permits, once again, if you'd like me to read the entire text to you, I can. But it says, "No signs will be erected, displayed, or altered or enlarged until an application has been on file or until a, or permit for such action has been issued by the building commissioner, rather than the planning board." And it goes on to say, "Those applications will be filed for those sort of things. They will go to forms prescribed by the building commissioner and not the planning board. And at a minimum, all those applications shall include a drawing, specifications, materials, and illuminations. Letter sizes, measurements, permits shall be issued only if, not the planning board, but the building commissioner determines the sign bylaw complies with that."
Wait, what? Wait, you just lost me there.
So permits, permits shall be issued only if, rather than the planning board, the building commissioner determines that the signs comply or will comply with the applicable provisions of the sign bylaw. So it basically takes the permitting from the planning board to the building commissioner.
But it locks into the bylaw, though, correct?
Yeah, correct.
So if they want it.
They got to have the stuff in the bylaw.
Okay, yeah.
So section B, which is eliminated, says, "The planning board shall act within 30 days." You're not going to be the permit granting authority. That's why it goes away. And section C, after the planning board has issued a signed permit, a copy of the permit will be transmitted to the building inspector. Well, the building inspector is going to look at the stuff that he just approved and make sure it complies. So B and C go away by the fact that the planning board doesn't comport, doesn't deal with those things anymore. And then we get to section 3562 fees. "A schedule of fees for such permits may be established and amended from time to time, not by the planning board, but by the building commissioner." And in section 3563, duration of permits, the planning board will no longer do that. "The building commissioner may limit the duration of any signed permit and make conditions said permits upon the continued ownership and operation of the business advertised upon the sign." So all that stuff is pretty much straightforward. It just makes the building commissioner do that stuff. Now, when we get to section 3570, this is a special permit to exceed the dimensions and lighting requirements for signs. So currently, the bylaw says, if you want a special permit to do that, the Carver planning board is the special permit granting authority that issues a special permit to exceed the number and size of signs allowed internally-let signs within the HC, VG, V, GDB, IC, IA, IB, and IA zoning districts. And the board's discretion will be based on the following criteria. Well, this part, as proposed by the zoning, building commissioner, is eliminated. So if someone wants a sign larger than what the bylaw prescribes, the building commissioner denies them. Says, "No, it's bigger than you can do." It's denied.
And then they go to the ZVA.
And then they go to the ZVA and say, "I've been denied by the building commissioner." So that's what the process, and I talked to the building commissioner just to make sure that's what he meant. Because the other two options are, you could say, "Well, we just want to make the zoning board of appeals the permit granting authority for this so it doesn't have to go an extra step." Or they could just say, "Well, we'll stick with the planning board and we'll just do the signs that are bigger and larger than you can want."
I don't need to get into anybody else's bad graces, so...
All right, so the gist of this is, you build a sign within the bylaw. And if it's bigger than the bylaw, the building commissioner says, "No," and you take it to the next table, to the building.
That's, that's how it should have been from the beginning. It's fantastic.
So with that, I'll be happy to take any questions.
I'm thrilled. It's not a question, but...
All right. Just the first answer, I believe.
You've just been sitting over there.
I've taken serious notes, by the way. So with that, if the chairman wants to post the hearing.
Do you want to vote on this tonight?
I think what we talked about, let's stay the course. Let's vote them all tomorrow so we don't have to, do we vote this, do we not vote that? I'm trying to make it easier for me.
Yes, I understand. Yes. Yeah, I, yeah, by the time it gets to slate, then, yeah. So let's, okay, entertain a motion to close the public hearing because there's no one else in the audience here for...
Have you got anything?
Yeah, that has anything. So for Article 19.
Kaylee Shea, so makes that motion to close the public hearing on Article 19.
And I will second that.
Okay, Mr. Shea made the motion. Ellen Sedillo, second. Those who favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, tomorrow night, we'll continue.
I know, but...
What?
I'm not entirely certain what's going on with the medical marijuana. I just...
That's, that's a, that's a moniker.
Yeah, but this is, this is the subject property.
Yeah, that little orange box is what they want to do. And that green box is where you can do marijuana now.
Hold on, before we break for the night, I need, I would like to make a motion that we address the citizen petitions first off tomorrow.
We get to handle the TDRs for a spot because we have guests coming in regards to that.
They get paid to be here.
I don't think they do. Right? Right, but I didn't know. Oh, okay.
But, you know, I know my wife is one of them that is presenting. We have childcare issues.
Oh, right, yeah.
So do we, okay.
I believe, I believe select person Bogart, Jim Bogart is presenting the other, is presenting the other one.
Right.
What her family situation is.
So do we have, so we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second it, but I really, I would give it up to you. You're the chairman. I, I think it should be your decision.
I think, I already spoke to Tom about this and I think I'd just like to keep it the way that we had it on, from before.
Where's your wife's article?
I don't, see, I don't know, I don't know what, I don't know where, I can't...
See, I thought, no matter where we left off, we were just going to start with the TDR. But because we had...
Probably we'll go, we'll probably vote on the, what we did tonight. And then we'll probably go to the TDR.
So you're going to push the, you're going to push the citizen's petitions off until like 9 o'clock at night?
Well, it's after 10 now, so I mean...
Exactly, but these, but, okay, I'm sorry. I've got an eight-year-old at home.
Well... Well, what's, so we have, we have, so let's, so we have a motion and we have a second. I guess we just did further discussion. So those in favor of putting the, the petition articles before anything?
I would say the two, it was the SOLO, specifically two SOLO petition articles. Was that correct?
Two petition articles, one of them for the battery, one of them for SOLO.
Do we have two SOLO?
We have, we have...
I haven't seen the battery.
The other one?
We have one SOLO, we have temporary article change, we have medical, medical marijuana. We have moratorium on battery storage, photovoltaic. We have, well, actually, we have three, three...
Citizen's petition.
Three, two, three for the SOLO and one for the battery. So, I don't know. So we have...
One of them is from the select board and it's also...
It's also on the, yes, the same one. So, yeah.
I don't have a problem with it, honestly. I just, I'm with... And it's because...
It's a, it's a childcare.
Right, I see, I see. It's not that you have to lead, but it's that Mary can't. Because you get the, your son gets...
We don't know where she's at.
All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. So we'll vote. So those in favor of putting the citizen's petitions first, please say aye.
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 Opposed? I'm opposed. Did you say aye?
I guess so.
Okay, so it's, so three and one. Okay, so we'll do the citizen's petition.
There's not a lot of discussion on the citizen's petition ones because we can't make changes to them.
All right, so that's what we voted, so we'll put those first. Okay, so a motion to adjourn?
Kaylee Shea, so makes that motion.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion by Mr. Shea, second by Mr. Sedillo for adjournment. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.